Anything reportable at this time? If we can stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Ready, begin.
I have pledged allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We get roll call, please.
Yes, roll call, council member McCabe, council member Sicarios.
Present.
Mayor Protam Samra.
Present.
Mayor Soria.
Present.
For the record, council member. Oh. Oh. Council member Aguilar.
Present.
Okay, all council members in attendance here today.
Thank you. Do we have any changes to the agenda, council? Okay, no changes. We'll go ahead and move on to awards presentations. Item one, we have a proclamation declaring June 2018 as immigrant heritage month. I have a proclamation here, I'm gonna go ahead and read it. It's, "Whereas generations of immigrants from every corner of the globe have built our country's economy and created the unique character of our nations, and whereas immigrants continue to grow business, innovate, strengthen our economy and create America jobs in the United States, California and Merced County, and whereas immigrants have provided the United States with unique social and cultural influence, fundamentally enriching the extraordinary character of our nation, and whereas immigrants have been tireless leaders not only in securing their own rights and access to equal opportunity, but also have campaigned to create a fairer and more just society for all Americans, and whereas despite these countless contributions of all immigrants in building and enriching our nation, has frequently been overlooked and undervalued throughout our history and continued to this continuing to the present day, now therefore be it resolved that we, Mayor Jim Soria and the Livingston City Council members do hereby proclaim the month of June 2018 as immigrant heritage month in the city of Livingston." And we'll move on to item two, resolution supporting the placement of $750,000 water bond on the November ballot.
Yes, Mr. Honorable Mayor and council and public. What you have before you is a resolution that talks about a water bond that the Front Water Use Authority in conjunctions with Mr. Gerald Merle, who's the former deputy director of the California Department of Water Resources, who has really asked for a resolution of support from our city council in supporting this placement of $750,000 water bond. I had an opportunity yesterday to speak, we had Congressman Costa visit our community yesterday, and I actually posed that question to him about this particular bond, and he's definitely in favor of this, and he urges our council to support this bond. I know Dominic is here, who works for the Front Water Use Authority. I'll allow you to add anything you want at this point, and then I will finish up the comments, so if you want to come on up, you're more than welcome to.
I just want to say, thank you for the opportunity.
If you could please state your name.
Yes, my name's Dominic. I am a campaign coordinator for the nonprofit organization called Californian's for Safe and Reliable Drinking Water, which is very important, especially for the San Joaquin Valley. Is it on? Oh, is it there? I had the opportunity to speak to Alex McCabe, I had the opportunity to speak to Jose, and also forward information to elected officials to go to a meeting, but I'm very thankful for that you did attend. I did look over your master plans, going over the, when it comes to storm, drainage, water recycling, it would all be there in the bond, so that as the city grows, and as the city should be growing, that those funds are will be applicable for the usage for the city, so that it gives you the opportunity to ease those pressures financially. And that majority of any questions or answers, I think that Jim Costa, because he is a supporter of the bond, to help the not only the San Joaquin Valley, but all of California when it comes to clean water reliability. And so, that is pretty much where I wanted to go.
Sure.
Because I, like I said, I went on and did some homework to see, you know, when it comes to the water utilities and whatnot.
So, this particular bond itself encompasses a variety of funding for different purposes. So, for instance, there's money in there to address the repairs on the Kern Canal.
Right.
What I'm specifically focused on, I know that's important, but for our community, what's important is that there's actually several million dollars that's set aside for safe drinking water, so communities like ours would be able to compete for those funds. And we all know, we all know that we definitely need, you know, to supplement our local funds with some outside money, and so this is a great opportunity for us to support a bond, and once this money is available for us to be put in a position to go after this funding. So, thank you very much for being here.
Thank you.
And, I don't know, council member McCabe, if there's anything else you might want to add?
Well, thank you.
With that, council?
Okay, thank you for your time.
Thank you. I'll open up for public at 7:15. Hey, nobody coming forward, I'll close it back up, bring it back to council for a motion and vote.
Is that open to the public?
Yeah, it's open to the public.
Did you want to make a comment, sir? Yeah, yeah, it's open to the public, go ahead.
Mythors, 1668th Street, Livingston, California. First of all, I want to thank the commissioners and our city manager and Garpal for doing our handicap doors at City Hall.
Thank you.
Very good job, I used them already, they worked good. Second thing is that, correct me if I'm right, we spent $40,000 on our Channel 2 government station, and we still don't have no sound or audio. I don't know why, we spend all that money, we got a picture.
Mr. Torres, this is for the water bond, you can bring that up at the citizen comments. We're on the water bond agenda right now.
Oh, I thought it was for the...
Yeah, yeah, citizen comments, you could bring that up. This is just for the water bond, if you have any comment on that.
Okay, I'll sit down, come back.
Okay, all right, thank you, Mr. Torres.
I apologize.
No worries. Again, this is open to the public for the water bond, the item we're on. No comment, okay, we'll bring it back to council for a motion and vote.
Before the vote, just a quick, just in case there's a few people out in the audience, this is supporting the bond initiative, they would then, the Front Water Use Authority and the other entities would then move to put this on the November ballot, and then it's up to the people to vote, and if the people vote, then there will be about $400,000 available for grants and loans that, which I would be keen on and would like to go after that competitive money, so, that's all.
Was it 400,000 or 400 million?
I said 400,000, sorry, 400 million.
Yeah, I was gonna say, that's a pretty low number.
For statewide, we'd be fighting for crumbs, you know.
Yeah, that wouldn't be enough.
Yes, go ahead, Vice Mayor.
To me, water is definitely an issue in California, we all know that, and I know a lot of times people don't like bonds, but if you have a better way of doing it, we're willing to listen. You know, we're our state, and we've got to work as a state, so I wholeheartedly support this, and I would like to make a motion to adopt a resolution supporting the placement of the 750 million water bond on the November ballot.
A motion from the Vice Mayor, do I have a second?
Second.
Second from council member McCabe, can I get roll call, please?
Roll call, council member McCabe.
Aye.
Council member Aguilar.
Yes.
Council member Sicarios.
Yes.
Mayor Protam Samra.
Yes.
Mayor Soria.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you, Mr. Dominic, and greetings to your board.
And Honorable General, I'd like to move item four to three, if there's no issues with that.
No issues.
Okay. So, moving on, we're moving item four to three, it's a presentation of a plaque to the family of the late Mr. Warren Earnberg, in memory, recognition and appreciation for the many years of service and dedication to the city of Livingston and its community.
Mr. Mayor, before you present the plaque, may I make a comment?
By all means, go ahead.
Thank you. I just wanted to make a comment that I've known Mr. Earnberg, and of course I've known Roger even longer, just as long, for a long, long time. If anybody was dedicated to the city, Mr. Earnberg was. I remember when Mr. Earnberg and Mr. Torres used to tag team out here, very dedicated, have their opinions, we may not agree with them, but at least their heart was always, always, well, his heart, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to put you in the, back to the past tense either, but Mr. Earnberg's heart was always for the city. We may not agree, but he, he really, really cared, and he'll be missed. I saw him at the Highland, and it's hard to watch someone you've known for a long time, but, you know, that's the unfortunate thing we do as human beings, you know, we pass on, not much we can do about it, and my condolences and warmest thoughts and prayers for the Earnberg family. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Council member McCabe.
Yeah, I just want to echo those remarks. He was a remarkable man, he was the very first person I met when I came to Livingston, and we were here at City Hall for an informational meeting, and over the years, he was always quick to tell me what he thought, if I was right or wrong, kind of got Henri with me a lot, but, just a, just a great guy, and just really showed what, someone who has dedication to a community and to a city, how, he just lived it. He lived that dedication, he lived that love, and he was, he's a great role model to myself, and I would say all of us here, and just very happy that I got to know him.
Well, with regards to the city, you know, as a city manager, when I came here in 2011, you know, Mr. Earnberg, he was definitely someone who was involved in just about everything that was happening, you know, with the city, and I personally am very grateful for that. We were in contact continuously, he's, he certainly kept me on my tippy toes, he had lots of questions, and there were not just questions, there were very, you know, direct, substance, with substance, and, and not only that, but he wasn't afraid to actually do the work, too, so he just, he wasn't somebody to just bring you, you know, questions or issues, he actually, you know, provided also some solutions and things of that nature. So, we're definitely gonna miss him, and I know that a lot of my employees feel the same way as I do, and, and thank you for, very much for allowing him, because, you know, it's also family, he has to, you know, be very supportive of somebody who's giving back to their community, and, and I know you have to pick up a lot of the weight. So, thank you as well, and, and we thank him, and we appreciate you allowing him to work with us directly.
Same here, same as my peers, Mr. Earnberg was, you know, a strong man, a strong personality, we had our agreements and disagreements, and I thank him for introducing me to Veterans' Night, Hamburger Night, so that's where we had some of our great conversations, so he'll be sorely missed, and we appreciate, you know, you allowing him to, you know, participate on planning and city events, so he'll be sorely missed.
So, I have a plaque.
What I have here is, in memory of Mr. Warren Earnberg, in recognition and appreciation for the, sorry, I'm getting choked up, appreciation for the many years of service and dedication to the city of Livingston and its community as a city council member, planning commission member, and a community leader for, for many Livingston organizations, and a community volunteer for various city programs and events. We present this plaque posthumously with our deepest sympathy, Livingston City Council, myself, Vice Mayor Garpal Samra, council member Arturo Sicarios, council member Alex McCabe, council member Juana Aguilar.
Thank you again on behalf of the city of Livingston. I'd like to move on to item three, Ewing Consulting Classification and Compensation Study.
Yes, Mr. Honorable Mayor and council, we have, we would like to present on behalf of the classification compensation study, we have a couple of representatives here from Ewing Consulting that's going to do us the honor, and I think the computer, everything is good to go, if you can hit the lights in the back, that would be great.
Well, good evening, Mayor Soria, city council members, and residents and employees of the city of Livingston. My name is Suzanne Ansari, I'm a senior human resource consultant with Ewing Consulting, we're a division of CPSHR, based in Sacramento, and our team is based specifically in Orange County. Tonight I have with me my esteemed colleague, Dr. Lena Rye, who's a human resource consultant with our firm. So, I did see Mayor Protam's sticker, and I just wanted, and I hope everybody was out there to rock the vote today, doing your civic duty. So, the purpose of our presentation tonight is to really share the summary of the classification and compensation study. So, the purpose of the classification and compensation study is really threefold. First, the study was conducted to make sure employees of the city of Livingston have the correct titles, and that the titles match the scope of the work that they're doing. The second goal was to ensure that the job descriptions were current and up to date. Now, I believe you did have a class and comp study done, but it's been over 10 years, is that correct? Okay. And then the third goal is to ensure that city employees are being paid a fair rate of pay based on the work that they're doing. So, we conducted a very comprehensive salary survey to find out where are the employees of city of Livingston being paid, as compared to other cities in the area, and some counties as well. So, we have a team of four people that worked on this project, myself, Dr. Ray, and also Bill Ewing Jr., who couldn't be with us tonight, he's our project director, and then we had a team of researchers, technical writers, and analysts that also worked on this study. So, if you want to just change the slide.
Do you want questions at the end, or anyone wants to ask for implementation?
Maybe at the end.
Okay.
Yeah. So, the classification and compensation study started with orientation sessions, so we met with employees, I think some of the employees might be here in the room tonight, to share with them what is the purpose of the study, what the purpose is not, how to complete their employee questionnaires, the timeline, so we went over that information with employees, just so they understood kind of the 4-1-1 of what the class and comp study would be. And then we held interviews with employees and supervisors to understand more about individuals' work, what they do, how they do their work, has anything changed in the scope of their work. We also, during the orientation session, we developed an advisory team, and the advisory team was a collection of employees from the major job families that were asked to walk alongside our consulting firm during the study. We didn't ask them to vote on anything, we just asked them to help us determine what are the, what the salary survey market is, to get employees engaged in the process, so the advisory team members were out there to make sure that people had a question about the questionnaire, and then really to encourage them to plug into the process, because we wanted to make sure that every voice, every employee that participated in the study, that their voice was heard through this classification and compensation study. So, we presented our preliminary findings after the interviews with regard to our proposed allocations or titles for the individual employees in those positions, and also our technical writing team drafted preliminary job descriptions. So, we had a team of technical writers that were working on that, and they wrote those descriptions based on the employee questionnaires, combined with the interview notes during the interview sessions. Employees were given the chance to review the preliminary rough drafts, because they're the experts and we're not, we wanted to make sure we got it right, so during the employee feedback process, we asked them to let us know, was there any verbiage changes, if we proposed a new title, what they thought about that new title, so that we want, it's important to make sure we get that input from the employees, so that we get the job descriptions correct for, for the city, but also for the employees that are in those positions as well. Then, once the, once the revisions to the job descriptions were made, then we went out to conduct the salary survey, which took about a month to a month and a half to, you know, to gather the research, and to find out what the findings were and make recommendations. And we're here tonight to present that final report, this is an information-only report, so I don't believe there's any voting going on tonight, correct? Okay, great. If you want to change the slide. Lena's gonna explain about the amazing participation that the city of Livingston had with regard to the study.
I teach college, and I have a tendency to scream, so hopefully everyone can hear me. Big part of our study, big part of any study, is how engaged employees are, or the participants within that study, and this rarely happens, so we found this to be not only extremely helpful in the work that we do, but in presenting the data, we were that much more confident that the information is valid and verifiable. So, if you take a look at the participation results, we studied 41 different classifications. Of those, 58 of those individuals were within those positions, incumbents in those positions. We received questionnaires, about 56, so we were missing two, and the only reason that we were missing those two is because those positions are vacant, so either currently being hired or reclassified. The participation rate, as you can see, is 98%, again, unheard of, so it was wonderful to see that. We conducted onsite 48 interviews with those incumbents, and the individual interview rate was 85%. So, if you can see from the preliminary job description, we had 41 different job descriptions that were written based on two things, one, of course, is what the employee sent us in terms of questionnaire results, but also the interviews, we find the interviews to be very, very helpful, we can look across the table at an employee and say, you wrote this, what did you mean by it? Because that adds, then, to the information in our job description. Excuse me, once we submitted those job descriptions to city employees, we then asked them, tell us if we got it right, we may not get it right, so let us know if we have gotten it right, and so 23 of those individuals that were receiving job descriptions, 23 sent us a response back and said, yes, you got it right, but no, this part needs to be changed. It allows us to make sure that we are putting in the information that is current, that the employees value, that is important to communicate, so that feedback process is absolutely critical. Let me move into one more slide, process, just a little bit more detail. So, I think this process, right, the employee feedback and appeal process, is critical in that it allows that communication between us and the employee to take place. I've had supervisors say, you know what, don't worry about the employees, we'll tell you what they do. That is not the process that we like, because it doesn't give us that one-to-one contact with the employee, which is critical. So, the preliminary job descriptions that were sent, the supervisors and the employees were asked to sit down together and collaborate and decide on what they wanted to do. Of those 23 received, we made changes, if we thought they were appropriate, if, if everyone else thought they were appropriate as well, then we made those changes, and then we submitted to each person who responded to an appeal, a letter saying, this is what we changed, this is what we could not change, so that the employees not left holding the bag and saying, oh, what happened to my changes, or what happened to my request? So, that's an important part of that engagement, and we, you know, I like to think of it as we're building trust with the employee, and so this process just allows us to go back and make sure that the employee and we are on the same page.
So, phase one of the study was the classification piece, phase two was the compensation piece. The compensation elements of the study were conducted, obviously, in the two phases, but within the compensation study, we looked at the salary survey, and also the internal relationships within the job families here at the city, and both were, both phases were conducted simultaneously. Change this slide. The compensation study was conducted using a market-driven approach, and using whole job ranking by job families. We selected benchmark classifications, and a benchmark just simply is a position here in the city that represents an occupational group, family, or profession that we can find out there in the market with the other cities that we surveyed. Not every classification was selected as a benchmark, but in total, we had 23 benchmarks that we went out to the market to survey, to find out what are they paying out there versus what are they paying here at the city of Livingston, out of 43 total. When we conducted the salary survey, we were looking to find out what is the median of the max base salary, not including longevity or benefits. So, it was a base pay salary at the top step, and then here at the city, you have, I think it goes A through, A through E, as far as the columns for employees, where they're paid at when, you know, step A or step E, and then clerical, I believe, has, has a step F in addition. So, we looked at that top step here versus whatever their top step was at these other cities that we surveyed. This is really important, and we did mention this in the orientation sessions, that our salary recommendations did not suggest any, any salaries be reduced, slashed, cut, if someone was over market, we found, we would recommend that position to stay where they're at. So, only if a position was under the median, did we make a recommendation to change, recommendation to change the salary. Next slide. All right, so we, we started out with the advisory team, that group of members of the city here from the different job families, to, to find... from the different job families, to, to find out what would the, what would our criteria be in looking for other cities that were a good match to survey against Livingston? So, the criteria that we looked at was the geographic area, the size of the population, similar types of programs or services. And our advisory team came up with a big list at first, and then some of the cities that the advisory team came up with were really large cities that just weren't a good match. So, the, in the end, we ended up with 10 cities and three counties that we used as salary survey participants. And those cities included the City of Series, the City of Selma, City of Riverbank, City of Oakdale, the City of Lathrip, the City of Arvin, the City of Shafter, the City of Ripon, the City of Parleye, and the City of Kerman. And then, three counties, County of Madera, County of Merced, and County of Stanislaw. And so, you can see here on the screen, we have the populations and then what counties that they were in. There, there was five counties that we, we surveyed. So, we looked at, next slide, we looked at these benchmark positions. Those benchmarks are the jobs that represent an occupational family or group. For tonight's presentation, we selected one benchmark. So, this benchmark we selected for tonight's presentation is the account clerk. So, the account clerk, when we looked at the other cities, here at the City of Livingston, that position is paid at the maximum of the, of the columns is $3,175. So, column number two lists all the classifications or the other titles that matched the job here. So, we took the new job descriptions, post the employee feedback, and then we went out to the market, and we asked these other cities to provide us with their jobs descriptions. We looked for at least an 80 percent match in the duties and responsibilities at these other cities or, or counties, to make sure that the education, the experience matched, the job duties match. But you can see here that some of the titles are different. So, we have account clerk as a comparison, accounting tech, but these were the ones that we selected, that we felt represented a similar position here as the account clerk. So, the consultants were very careful to compare the participant classifications with those developed here for the City of Livingston, to assure that there was proper matching of the classification content. We asked the other cities to provide us with their minimum salaries and then their maximum salaries relating to the benchmarks. Since the salaries practices of many cities tend to vary considerably, we elected to use the median as the measure of central tendency. So, the median just really simply means, if you have an array of numbers, the median is the middlemost point between those numbers. We also calculated what the, what the average was as well, but the averages can be thrown off by extreme highs and lows. So, we, we like to use the median of the market to compare with. So, for this account clerk, we can see that the median of the salary here is $1,327.41. Next slide. So, for that account clerk, that position, based on the market research that we did, is being paid $90 under what the median or the middlemost point of the market is. And that's compared with eight different participants, because not every city or county had a position that matched. But we found at least eight matches for this account clerk, and that's the, the title there in yellow. Of all the bench, all the benchmarks are listed there in the very far column. The second column is the salary max, so that's your, the maximum salary for, for the positions here at the city. The third column is the salary survey median. So, these are, you can see there's an array of numbers here, and that's what the median of the market turned out to be for that position. And then, the difference. So, anything you notice with a minus means that here at the City of Livingston, that job is under-market by that much. So, for the account clerk, it's $90 under what the median is. And then, the last column is the number of participants that we found matches with at the various cities and counties that we surveyed. Next slide. So, the next slide is the salary range recommendations. The range recommendations are broken down by classification and it, and also by, by classification and the, you know, from high to low. So, we can see for the accounting fiscal department in yellow, the account clerk is in yellow, and that's the entry level position, that was a benchmark. So, on the very far column, you can see all the benchmarks that were selected, and then the positions that were not benchmarks, those are, those would have the blanks under the salary survey max and median. We tried to establish eternal, internal relationships between the classifications to make sure there's prop, a proper internal ranking for each position within the job family. And as you can see here, there's some incomplete boxes. So, we've made recommendations based on where the median was and what our, our firm, these are simply recommendations from a firm looking from the outside in recommending where that salary should be. Your salary schedule here at the city is not the traditional stepping columns with ranges on there. So, we weren't able to recommend a specific range, because your salary schedule has the account clerk, and it goes from A, I believe they're on clerical, too, and then the last column would be F. So, typically, a salary schedule, and we are working with that with Dana here at the city, to develop a new salary schedule, which I believe you had in the past, where it had the ranges as well as the columns. So, once we have that new salary schedule that we can work off of, we'll recommend the salaries for the, the positions that were non-benchmarks. Next page. Okay, so, so it's important to consider the impact of the salary range recommendations based on the city's financial resources and also the well-being of the employees. So, there are a couple of implementation strategies that can be, be done to implement a study like this. The most important one would be to consider the implementation of any recommended salary changes throughout the, a period of several years, in order to ease the financial burden in any given year. So, most cities don't have millions to throw at getting these jobs up to market, up to the median. And in our final report narrative, we go through the various implementation strategies that the city could use to implement, you know, implement any salary adjustments. Many of the jobs here at the city were under-market. There were only a few, I want to say a handful, that were over-market. So, based on our research, the city, the positions here are being paid under-market, which I don't think was a big surprise to, to, to many people. I think they had done their own research in the past, and maybe the last study also may have shown that you were under-market for many of the positions. So, there's been considerable time and effort and money to, to even conduct the study, invested in preparing the class descriptions and in determining the relative value for each classification and the overall salary structure for the city. So, I guess in ending, we would suggest that this program of reviewing the jobs and going out and looking at, you know, how do you compare with the market, that that be continued and maintained on a regular basis. Many cities, and it depends on the city, but they try to look at the jobs every five years, some cities are every 10 years, so it kind of just depends. But we would recommend that if you've invested all this money to do this salary class and comp study, that you would continue to make sure that it's maintained on a regular basis. And at this point, I would like to open it up for any questions or comments from city council members?
Actually, I'll open it up for public comment first.
Oh, okay.
At 7:47, anyone from the public wishing to make comment? All right. We'll close it back at 7:47 and bring it back for any questions or comments to council.
Yes, there are five other cities in Merced County, and you chose not to use any of them for your market survey. Can you please explain why we would not compare ourselves to neighboring cities who are fairly similar in size?
And I think you're referring to a, a city like Atwater that's close by.
Yeah, why would we, why would we go an hour away where the cost of living and lots of other factors may affect this? Why would we go so far and not actually look in our own backyard? I mean, you guys could have done this. This would have taken one public records request from each city you would have had in 10 days, or it's all online. Why not look at at least one other city in Merced County?
That's a very valid point, and our advisory team came up with the, the list of cities, and Atwater was a city they did not want to use.
Why?
For example. They didn't really describe why, they just said they didn't.
I mean, I mean, if, if, part of your conversation was trying to get our service, get us to use your services in the future, this is the second report that I've looked at, from your company, I'm this, now becoming the chair of MCAG.
Okay.
And I'm, I'm just shocked that you're, don't seem to be very thorough with your study. If you're going based on median, why wouldn't you incorporate other cities who are, say, 9,000 population, or Atwater, 30,000 population? What, I, it, it doesn't seem like a complete report to me at all.
Well, I would, I would beg to differ in that the salary saver market was established by our advisory committee, so.
Then, why didn't they use any city?
Their lead on what cities to use.
Why, why not use any city, though, within our own county?
I mean, that's a question we can ask the advisory committee, again.
I, I'd like it. I mean, we've paid a lot of money for the survey, and you didn't survey anyone except for the county. I'm quite frankly, very disappointed in this survey, because I think it is logical to at least acknowledge what other people in the same county make for the same job, not what someone an hour and a half in Parleye makes, or not what someone, what other county was it here, in San Joaquin County in Ripon makes? Those are, do you know what a house in Ripon costs compared to a house in Livingston? I mean, there's considerable differences.
The cost of living wasn't taken into consideration, we just looked at the base salary.
Okay, but either way, base salary, it seems logical to look at people in the same county who are doing the same job, what they're being paid. That seems like what a market survey should be.
Okay. It's a fair point.
Susan, if you can mention who, the makeup, we don't have to name names, but the makeup of, of the, of the committee and, and the makeup of the different departments that make up the committee.
Okay.
So, so that the council and the public understand how, how, because it's, it's one way or the other, I mean, you can, if, if, if you're an employee, of course, you're going to look at wanting to have other comparables farther out, because that could be to your advantage, because then that means that, that the, the salary schedule, I'm not saying that they will be higher, but they could be higher.
It looks like carry picking, is what it looks like.
Well, there you go.
The members of the advisory team were consisting of a manager from police services, public works, fiscal accounting, HR, I mean, you don't officially have an HR department, but those were, Lena, can you think of any other members on the advisory team?
We went across all different departments. One of the biggest considerations is what, and you, you know, there's always a little bit of bias. So, of course, in every study, depending on what is chosen, there's subjectivity. And so, but we, as consultants, we're going to defer to those who.
Oh, so it's our staff who chose the cities to compare? It's not your company who chose cities to compare?
We suggest, we will guide.
So, why did our staff choose not to look at any other city in Merced County?
That's a very good question.
And why would we hire consultants to have our staff do the work?
Okay, well, first of all.
First of all, I do agree with Councilmember McCabe. If the people are the advisory that have the most to gain, will tend to skew things to their advantage.
And in the, in the beginning, they, they did. They, they had a very big list of cities, and some cities were even further out than these were, which was narrowed down.
Councilmember McCabe's point is valid in saying, we do have, you've listed cities that are like 41,000 population, but we have cities that are closer to our population within the county. Los Banas is about 35, 33,000, Atwater's around 30, 33, I don't know what.
And they have this same types of programs and services at those cities?
Yes, because a officer, and I'm, I'm not trying to do a point, is just say, officer in Livingston tends to have pretty much the same kind of duties they're going to have in Merced, or not, or I shouldn't say Merced, but say Atwater, because we're similar communities, work rate, worst workload and all that, tends to be pretty equal. Because our, I don't want to use the word crime, but our folks that are not good citizens tend to be pretty much the same percentage rate. And we will, we will, Livingston will deal with pretty much the same water issues that we deal in Atwater or Los Banas. Our roads, because the funding comes from our sources, tend to be pretty much the same source as other cities would get. So, we're closer to, we are more aligned with, you know, Atwater, Los Banas, and others. Granted, I don't, I don't mind looking at some of them, because, you know, but I think, I would like to go back and at least put one or two cities from the county, and then redo the numbers and see how we look, because there's no way you're going to skew from three counties away and say, you know, you know, this is what it is, because even in my four, five o'clock job, I pretty much know what other counties are paying their folks. And if I were to say, I'm going to be on the committee to say what cities we're going to pick, well, naturally, I want to pay rates, at least I'm going to lean that way and say, "I want this, 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 and this." I know it's going to show us way under, and now, how are we going to deal with that? So, I would really, really like to see a couple of cities from Merced.
And those being Atwater, Los Banos, any others?
Gustine, Dos Palos, and might as well Merced. Let's do all five cities that are within a 10-minute drive of here. And, and just, just a question, though.
And most of the, and you don't have to do too much work, because.
I can do it in 10 minutes.
No, no, most of the cities that I know, just like Livingston, their salary schedules are already online. You can just pull their salary schedules. Job title may not be exactly the same, because we may require a employee in different department to do maybe slightly different functions, and I can understand that.
Okay.
But.
One of the considerations that you should also have is where are your current employees going to in terms of new jobs? I mean, if they're leaving here and going to neighboring cities, then that is a city that we should look at, because they're being attracted.
Yes, I, I agree with what you're saying. However, we, the elected body, also have to make a decision and say, "How much can our citizens afford to pay?" You know, yes, we want to retain good employees, we want to do everything we do to incentivize. And I've spoken with our city manager and says, "We need to do professional development." We want to keep, however, you, you can't try to keep employees if you can't afford to pay them.
Right.
And that's the valid point right there. If somebody's going to leave, well, you know, "Give me $5,000 a month more, or I'm going to leave." Well, you know what? You know what our situation is, and this is all we can afford, and if you still don't think that you're being treated fairly, well, then, you know what? You can make whatever decisions you need to make. Not to say that we don't want to treat our fair, we want to pay a fair, fair salary, of course. I don't want to underpay, because a, a employee that can take care of their family tend to be better workers. If they don't have to worry about month-to-month bills, well, then, they'll, they'll show up at work, and they're more tuned to what they're doing. However, when we cut the check every two weeks, we've got to make sure that we can clear that check as well. It's no use having the checks bounce, you know, it doesn't work.
So, Jose, if you want to send us a list, after talking with the, the council members of cities that were on the list that, you know, we missed, that should have been part of the survey, then we'll go back out there to the market and make sure Atwater, Los Banos, and whatever other cities that are a good match are, are on there.
Yeah, and then we'll, we'll definitely communicate council discussion tonight to the, the committee, so that that way they're aware of the findings and will move forward.
So, all right, so, I, I'm just, need to understand, because I've been fairly aggressive, and it's, it's your job, so I don't mean to be aggressive at you personally, it's your actual report. But it, we hired them as consultants to have our own committee do it, and their main thing was to do the comp, not necessarily the compensation, but the, the job descriptions? And it was our staff who decided to do the compensation work? What, what justifies us now even paying for this, this, this consulting if our, if our staff are the one who are doing the work? I'm, I'm confused.
Well, no, they, the councilmember McCabe, they mentioned all of the different areas and, and, and categories that they were working on, and they, and, and the committee provided, you know, a, a list. And they, and the committee provided, you know, a list. Now, granted, I'm not, because I'm a decision maker, I'm not part of that process. I excluded myself from being in that process. Okay, so they came up with the list of cities, and they had a number of different recommendations. And so it's a balancing act between the consultants and the committee, so the consultants did not go with everything that the employees came up with. And because, at the end of the day, it's a give and take, you know? So they are doing, you know, their work. But I'll allow them to certainly share.
I'm just curious, are they facilitators or are they consultants? Are they the ones actually doing it, or is it our staff is doing a lot of it, and then they're compiling the information so we can understand it in a form?
Well, just look at it this way. If we did not have a committee and we did not incorporate our employees, and we just went out and hired a consulting firm and tell them to go ahead and do it, we would be very challenged, because our, the bargaining groups would be, you know, not necessarily happy with, not to say they're not going to be happy with what we're doing now, but there is, at least the employees would be more abhorrent to what the outcomes are going to be, because they were part of the process. So it's just, and by the way, this presentation here is not a final, set in stone. Actually, this is part of the process. We, I didn't want to be biased and communicate information to them. This is the first time that I'm seeing this presentation, because I wanted the council to see the full scope of what's happening.
Right.
Now we're providing them with feedback and direction. This is not, and by the way, like I said, not everything is being presented tonight, because it's not done. It's organic and it's still going.
Right. And I'll just add that, you know, during the advisory committee, there were cities in San Francisco they wanted us to use.
Was that you, Tony? Was that you?
I got also, I got a question, too. Were health benefits taken into consideration?
No, it was base salary.
Remember, some cities are paying in the thousands for their monthly health benefits, so.
Right, and we looked at only base salary, longevity, not including benefits.
That would be something to consider as well, because if you move from county, you're making five grand, but you're paying a thousand dollars in benefits.
You're right, yeah.
We do have, the cities and counties you say include benefits, because that's a consideration for us, and it's a draw to our city. So if that is something you'd like, we can do the compensation part, including benefits.
But that would cost, I mean, a whole benefits survey is in addition to, you know, traditional class and com study, but it is another service we can offer to survey what are the benefits out there. But the numbers that we have in the salary survey are just base salary. They don't include benefits or longevity.
It would cost more money.
I'm sorry?
Then the report's not as accurate as should be, then.
Yeah.
Because I mean, I could make five thousand dollars in this county, make six thousand in another county, but pay twelve hundred dollars in benefits, then I would rather stay in this county.
It was not a total compensation study. It was a base salary study. So, again, a benefits survey is something we could do, but that's a different...
Can we get that? Because when we approved this, I thought we were doing a compensation study, not a base salary study. So can we get a copy of the original contract, too, sent to council, so we can review that?
Sure, sure, we can certainly do that. Yeah, this is a classification compensation study, and...
It is, but it's, okay, so why does that not include all compensation?
Well, the consultants will certainly share with you that when, if you look at the RFPs out there, and, I mean, you have to specify if you wanted to have a compens, an actual benefit survey done. I mean, there's different components to it.
Oh, okay, so they expressed to us that they would not be researching that component of compensation?
Yeah, the contract, you know, doesn't have total compensation, including benefits. It's just compensation.
It just wasn't specified when we were negotiating and talking. Usually, we will ask that due to total compensation, that includes benefits. In this case, benefits was not part of the study nor requested.
Okay.
That's great. But if that's something that council wants...
I mean, I want an accurate study. I don't want a false study. I want to compare as closely as I can one job to another job with similar job duties, and what's reasonable to pay these people.
If I may, if I may, please.
Go ahead.
You know, it was actually correct that we did this about ten years ago. I was part of it. You know, these things don't happen every year or every two, three years. So it's better, I think, that if we're going to, we're doing this, is to get every component we can get in there. So we want to be fair to the employees as well. I think we all do, everybody here. We want to. You know, last time we had a go-around, we did a study, they were talking about being underpaid, and then we made a comment that, you know, just six months ago, you were paying a hundred dollars a month for insurance, now you're paying nothing. You've got to count that eight thousand plus in your salary, you know, you don't count that. So that can be, that's a huge difference, almost eight, nine thousand dollars more in their pocket. You know, so I think, I don't know what we need to do, but I would like to see at least, maybe not, maybe on a sidebar and says, their benefits include like this, you know, maybe say, base salary is here, and here's what, total benefits and cost. The place where I work at, they actually did that. They said base salary and total cost for the employee. They had the base salary and the total cost. Yes, it was arranged, because you go through steps to a certain degree, but it was arranged, and then cost of it, so it was added to the total cost of the employee as a work, you know? I think that gives us a better picture.
So what I would like is council to give staff direction, then, to look at having an addendum done to your contract for what that would look like for the compensation, for the benefits survey and so forth, as part of this. This won't hold up, you know, what we're doing on this side is just be supplemental, and then we'll bring it back to council for approval.
Pay more for it. I mean, this is all public information that our staff can gather in literally two hours. Unless they have a reasonable cost for it, I don't think we need to go spend a lot of money to get public information.
No, very valid what you're saying, but it's, but I, but I, I would balance it by saying that if it was our staff that went out and did this work, there's a tendency for the entire group and even the public to say that, you know, that it's skewed, because it was staff that did it, you know.
But it's public information. It's not something that they could falsify. I would hope, I would hopefully trust our staff enough to get on the internet and pull up a classification study. Or not classification study, but a benefits package and be able to give us the information.
So what we can do is, again, because we're going to come back to council, we'll let them present, we'll let them share, you know, what it's going to be and what it will entail, so that way the council knows exactly what that's going to be. And then at that point, we can get further direction if we go with them to do this addendum, or we have staff do it.
Okay, that's fair.
Any other questions, comments?
Just if you could relatively stay within population-wise, I know it's hard to do, but there are some cities, different counties, like I know Escalon's probably a little bit smaller than us. I know Newman's on there. Patterson's probably a little bit bigger. So, Arvin, that's like way, way up there, passed by Bakersfield, I believe. So, I mean, employees could, you know, apply different places, but we can try and keep it within, maybe Fresno County, Madera County, San Joaquin County.
So I think if we added, if we added the other cities within Merced County, I think that that would balance things out, so. Okay, thank you, Susan.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Forward, we're on announcements and reports. I don't see Supervisor Espinoza here.
Mr. Mayor, Supervisor Espinoza asked me to say that he was not able to make a due-to-family thing he has to take care of tonight.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. So I'll excuse the supervisor tonight, and we'll move on to staff announcements and reports.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, council members, members of the public. Anthony Cheverio, Public Works. I'm here this evening to present Public Works' monthly activity report for the record. That was the first time I seen the compensation classification study as well. This first picture we have is of our streets crew trimming a tree. We can see it caused some damage on the sidewalk, lifted sidewalk. We have a lip right there, trip hazard. It tangled a water meter. We had to cut it down, remove it, replace it. One more. You can see where a tree's gone. We had to move the water meter over and replace that broken sidewalk. This was a Measure V project. Another sidewalk repair on Swan. Here we have the wireless LED crosswalk installation. Our streets crew is boring into the road right now to drop in those streetlights. Wonder what it looks like after the board's complete. You can see on the outside of the crosswalk, the in-ground lights. Yeah, that picture doesn't do it justice, because of the angle I'm in, but when you're on the road, those lights are LED, so they're really bright. Really see, they really light up. Here we have Hammonton-Balmoral ADA Ramp Improvement. It's another Measure V project. We have our crew forming curb and gutter sidewalk. Again, we had a huge tree lifting the sidewalk, creating trip hazards here. We had a resident come to Public Works and inform us that their wife had fallen and hurt herself in this area a couple of times already. Some finished work there. Here we have Art and Alex working on the little guy's dugout field, on the dugouts. That's completed. They did a really great job on it. As you can see, the old ones, I didn't put any pictures, but they were pretty bad shape, had holes and broken pieces of wood on top, and really wasn't providing any protection for the kids. Here we have Tommy at the wastewater plant taking off a motor off of a bar screen. We've been having problems over at the headworks, but what this does is it runs that bar screen and helps remove trash, incoming trash and debris from the wastewater stream. It's important to have working, because that's what protects our downstream equipment, removes solids. Here's a picture of a completed Foster Farms Industrial Receiving Station, which is working now, and we will be putting a locking lid out on beast, it was a vine wood, so we don't have anybody going out there and dumping on us. There's a picture of the Campus Park Water Connection, tie-in, that's active, running. Here's Campus Park Sewer Connection. It has poured that bottom ring of the manhole, and they'll be breaking it open and finished putting in the barrel. Here's a picture of our Calian Future Walk Path. This is another Measure V project. Here's what it'll look like when it's finished. The solid red lines is where the actual walk path will be installed, laid, connecting to the existing sidewalk, so we could create a atmosphere similar to Gallo Walkway, that walk path for our residents. Here we have our L and D crew providing landscape maintenance. And our last picture is of our newest full-time employee, Ramon Trujillo. He just sworn in the other day. He is, Mr. Trujillo's worked two years, about two years, part-time for the city. He currently holds his distribution and his certification, is working on his water treatment right now. Really great worker, great work ethic, character, and look forward to many years of service out of Mr. Trujillo. And one thing we are, just wanted to inform council, we still are looking within the community for more ADA projects. One of them is Mr. Torres, is where he lives, it's a corner off of Peach and Eighth Street, which we'll be tackling here after the first phase of our Calian Walk Path. Any questions?
Any questions from public? Questions, council? Yeah, it looks great. I like the shade that was provided to the little guy's field.
Yeah, that came out really good. He did a really good job.
Hey, if you get a chance, can you have your crew check the water fountains at the Alvernes baseball field? I think the visiting side was broken or not working. I'm not too sure about the home side. Baseball's going to come into full swing, and if it's sure of the visiting side, we'd like to at least provide them with some good water fountain. Everything looks good. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, members of the community. It's Baraka Carter, Fire Department, Battalion Chief for Livingston Fire Department. It's been a while since I've been able to address the council. The last couple of months have been pretty busy with some training, and trying to spend some time getting our personnel up to speed with some training. This month's run reports. For the city of Livingston, we ran a total of seventy-five medical aids, two vegetation fires, six vehicle accidents, one vehicle fire, three debris fires, one false alarm, and six public assists and one hazardous material release. These were all within the city of Livingston through May 1st and June 1st, 2018. For the county calls, ran a total of eight medical aids, eight vegetation fires, twenty-three vehicle accidents, two vehicle fires, six structure fires, three debris fires, one alarm sounding. And these were all in the county area surrounding the city of Livingston. For 2018, our total calls for the year is seven hundred and fourteen, which is up nine percent from last year's call volumes. For the cities, we're a total of four hundred and forty-eight calls. That's up twenty-six percent from June 1st, 2017. And then for the county, we're at two hundred and sixty-six calls, which is down twenty-seven percent since June 1st, 2017. Our total PCF response for the month was seventy percent. Nine percent of that was PCF coverage for the station. We had five hundred and seventy-nine calls today within our first response area in the city and county areas. Last month's training, our paid staff did ventilation, vertical ventilation, and that's where the personnel dawned a ladder. They take a saw aloft, and then they cut in a ventilation hole that allows the exhaust of hot gases while the interior team, the guys that are on the ground, going in to suppress the fire. And it's a coordinated effort between the personnel that are inside and the personnel that are on top of the roof, so communication is a must. And for our PCFs, we had auto extrication. That's where we work with our jaws of lives. We're looking at, we're in the process of looking at some, going from our hydraulic type of extracations to E, and they're called electronic. They'll be a little more environmental friendly. And then as far as maintenance, they'll be easier to maintain. Last month, on May 5th, the PCFs had their annual Livingston Pancake Breakfast. I wasn't able to attend, but I heard that it was another successful event. It's one of the things that, you know, when the PCFs are able to do something like this, the funds that they raise through these types of events go towards buying different types of extrication tools or PPE for the personnel. That way we can service, enhance our services through the community. Last month, we did the MDA Field of Booth. It's an annual event that we do, not just here in the City of Livingston, but in the countywide. Last year, this year, we raised $3,552.36. That was all donated to MDA. Mersey County as a whole raised $27,119 that was donated. And then between Mariposa, Merced, and Madera County, we were able to raise $56,612 that was all donated. And that was the largest donation that was raised in one single day throughout the state. Last month, we had two school visits. It's getting towards the end of the year where we're getting a lot of, some of the schools are wanting to come for field trips. So we, you know, embrace that and we actually go out and in hopes that the community and the schools will come out and visit us. We have a lot of little trinkets to pass out to the kids for our prevention. So we welcome any of the schools that want to come out. And now that we're starting to get into our winter, our summer months, things are starting to heat up. So we're trying to get the public to understand it's a weed abatement time. So as the weather gets hotter and drier, it's a reminder to mitigate hazards on the properties such as weeds, debris piles, tree trimmings, and rubbish. Required to maintain 30 feet, a 30-foot disc or 50-foot mow fire break around our structures. And that's all fence line as well. So we've already completed our first inspections. We'll be going out doing our second inspections. We're coordinating with Public Works to identify hazard areas within the city so that way we can work together to make sure we mitigate those, identify those hazards and mitigate them as well. And then lastly, for our safety measures, we'd like to ensure that the public understands carbon dioxide detectors as far as the poisoning, the signs and symptoms of them. And if they have carbon monoxide detectors that are over 10 years, we encourage them to come out. We typically have them at the stations that we can, we can actually provide it to them free of charge. But if the public wants to go out, if it's over 10 years, we strongly encourage you to go out and replace that. And then some of the signs and symptoms of carbon dioxide, you know, just headaches, nausea, dizziness, breathless, and then obviously collapse and non-responsive. The thing about carbon dioxide, you know, it can't be seen, can't be smelled, can't be heard, but there's a way to prevent it. Questions?
Mr. Mayor, I do have one question. If you could give us the update on the guns and hoses final score? Did the Fire Department gun the Police Department or how did, can you give us an update on that for me, please?
I was hoping, I was hoping no one asked that question. The Fire Department was not. We weren't victorious that day. But that's, that's one day that we'll give PD. No, we, it was a good event, you know, we had a good time. It was the first time, we hope that we can do something like that annually. And one of the things that I like about it, it gets not just the community out, but it gets the city personnel together outside of work and it builds camaraderie. So it's one of the good things about it. But PD did trump us that day and what we're looking for next year.
It was, and I know we're just having a good time with it. But it was a good game.
It was.
It showed everybody and I, and you're absolutely correct. I hope we do it on an annual basis. It was a good event.
It was.
Regardless, it doesn't matter who wins. It's nice to win, but doesn't, that's not the point of it is, is to be together as a team from both different agencies, you know?
Correct. Thank you.
Do we have any other staff members? Code enforcement? Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, members of the community. I'm Lamont Mack, Code Enforcement Officer with CSG Consultants. As you all know, we were brought in about a year ago now to, on a CDBG grant to work on code enforcement and community preservation issues and three designated census tracts. Today, I'm gonna give a, there's some nice pictures of you all. I'm gonna give a report of our activities in the last couple of months. I believe we were not here last month to report on some of the things that had gone on, so I'm gonna consolidate both months here tonight. This is a, just a small flow chart of who we are. Mr. Cushing, our program manager, is actually here in the audience today. Lamont Mack, I'm the Senior Code Enforcement Officer. And Lee Holt, who's actually my technical assistant, is actually, not only did she put together this presentation, but she's the one who actually works here on a part-time basis and has actually embraced our, some of the community preservation and supportive code enforcement work that we've discussed in the past. And she's done an excellent job. These are the three census tracts that I mentioned. As you can see, the outline areas, the blue, the yellow, and the black. You know, it takes up about 50% of the city. And as we all know, those are the, some of the older structures with some of the issues that come with older housing stock. And, you know, everything from like the abandoned vehicles that we talked about, but also more typically delayed maintenance and things like that. And again, we've been taking a supportive code enforcement approach and working with the blighted conditions. And I think we're seeing kind of the domino effect or the snowball effect that we talked about. And it's very, it's very empowering to see. Another thing here is, what I'm proud to say is that Officer Holt is very good about collaborating with other departments. So she's worked in a number of cities and she has a keen eye for going into a situation and saying, wow, this is big and there's a lot of other departments that need to come in. And so she's very good with collaborating with building. She's a, actually our hybrid building inspector as well. So she's very good with the technical aspects of buildings and things, but she's also good with working social services and things like that. So correct me if I'm wrong, but I'd say that you guys have probably gotten good feedback from the public because Lee is very thorough as far as her education efforts and treating people fairly as far as providing public service or social services and things like that. Yes, let's see. These are, you know, some of the more unsightly conditions that we encounter and we have been encountering and taking care of. I think everybody will probably recognize some of these areas. These are the kinds of things that when you drive by, you kind of shake your head and hope that code enforcement will get to one day. And these are the very issues that we're here to combat. Another thing that, and this happens in code enforcement, but I think it struck me in particular that a lot of the cases that we had previously closed early last year are starting to recur, like the same sorts of conditions. And so, you know, there's a number of different reasons for that. But the point is, we, there's a life cycle to some of these community preservation issues and we're seeing the recurrences pop back up and we're dealing with them accordingly. Speak of the devil. I usually don't like to call out addresses in particular, but this is an address that we worked with. We thought we had solved the problem. We've towed cars from this address. We are working with the police department. And this is another sort of a thorn in our side, if you will. A number, a long list of enforcement actions have taken place at this address with regard to vehicles. And so it's under constant monitoring by both code enforcement and PD, and I think we're making good headway. Here's some other, this is another longstanding case that a lot of you may be familiar with at 1429 Lupin Court. This is the, well, I won't get into the details of it, but it was brought to our attention last year and we've been working. In this case, we had some absentee family members, we have some health issues, social service issues. And so these are the types of cases that it becomes difficult when you don't have it regularly occupied. And when you do, you don't have someone who's physically capable or financially sound enough to do much about it. So these are the kinds that we try and do what we can to abate the violations. But first and foremost, we want to keep any occupant safe. Currently, it's, I believe it's no longer occupied. I believe this gentleman is hospitalized. And so hopefully, we're chipping away at the fact that it's no longer going to be a blight on the community. May end up being a vacant house for a while. But this is probably the perfect kind of situation that might be ripe for what's called a receivership, where we get a court order to come in and appoint a receiver to use whatever assets are available to rehab the house, to a minimal state. And so that's something we'll be thinking about. Again, here's some other, another case that, this is one that's outside of our census tract. As you all know, periodically, our officers will go on a complaint basis and we will try and lend a hand in some of the areas outside of the census tract. This is 1524 Grapevine. Their code violations ran the gamut and we made headway there as well and we're continuing to work on it. Again, this is a, one of the large complexes that I believe we've discussed in the past. Everyone had a, an observation that was made in the past. We've had issues with everything from exterior litter to, we had issues with the lighting. There's a lot of deterioration. I've personally worked directly with the maintenance staff here to get rid of the type of telltale hazards that you see there, like the discarded refrigerators and things like that, that could be an immediate hazard. But we've also been working on just a Pandora's Box of issues at this complex, including having large-scale debris box dumping, increased trash pickup service, so these types of accumulations no longer occur, weed management, litter management. And of course, once we get along, as we unwrap the onion, we're gonna get to the things like the dry rot and the roofing and things like that. What we plan on doing in this case, because all the telltale signs seem to be there, is that we plan on doing, at the very least, random inspections inside the units. I think the tenants would be okay with that. And what we're looking for is kind of a, sort of the same sorts of housing code-type inspections that a housing authority might look for. So we're not trying to bring them up to the highest standard, but we'll be looking at things like smoke detectors, interior leaks, broken windows, locks that don't work, things like that. Here's another recurring issue that goes on outside of our designated track, 1154 Peach. Again, some of these violations that recur kind of reflect the lifestyle and other issues that Officer Holt has uncovered that kind of goes on at these addresses. And so sometimes, to our dismay, we become sort of the default property managers when we have to state the obvious about, you know, exterior appliances and things like that. But again, Officer Holt is working closely with these folks and we think they're coming around. A lot of folks might, might recognize this property here where there obviously was a structure fire, including a trailer. I'm happy to say that this will soon be something of the past. The Fire Department is gonna use this for training. I believe there was some asbestos found, so there's a few more permits from a county level that will need to be obtained before we can go forward with the controlled burn and the training exercises. But that should be quite the event and then we're gonna clear the site. This is 1049 I Street. Relatively new case, similar to the Lupin case where we have some pretty deplorable housing conditions. And, you know, they're even reflected from the exterior, as you can see our rat friend in the window here. This is the interior of that same house. Again, the occupant, elderly woman has been, she's no longer living on-site, but this is an active Adult Protective Services case. And so they'll be working, they're actually collecting this evidence and trying to make a case to, I believe, establish perhaps some, can't think of the legal terminology, but anyway, it would be a power of attorney so this woman can get the care that she needs. But also, in lieu of something like a receivership, we'd like her family members or someone who we could designate to actually have, hold the purse strings and get this cleaned up and possibly sell the house. A gentleman. It's not a lady. Okay. And here's some success stories. So to get down to the numbers, we've closed 24 cases in these two months. That brings, since, I'll go ahead and give you a grand total, since we're almost at one year, that would be about 115 cases of various types that are closed. And so I consider that a big success story, even though I mentioned the recurring nature of about 20 of these properties. We currently have 30 open and active cases and reflected in some of those photos and some other things that probably just aren't as photo-worthy. But nonetheless, 30 is a, probably a pretty typical amount of code cases on a recurring basis. You know, as we close them, of course, we get more. As I discussed at my last time here at the podium, we're also opening proactive cases strategically to help along some of these. So in other words, when Officer Holt is in town and she's on her way to follow up on various compliance orders, she can also see similar conditions and proactively go after those. So that's, I expect our caseload to probably remain at 30 throughout our time here and I consider that successful. Keeping with the success stories, we have 1402 Swan Street. It's a vacant property. When we first got the case, it was strewn with litter, boarded, lots of neighbor complaints. This is what it most closely resembles today. There's still work ongoing, but as you can see, there's been substantial progress from the public right of way and we've gotten some good comments about that. Also, similar success story over on Davis Street. This is a vacant lot that was a magnet for dumping. And Officer Holt has worked directly with the owner to get them on a regular plan to look at their property and make sure that the weeds and the dumping was taken care of. And she's been successful. Also, we, we've had a number of these where, you know, we don't know if it's being staged for the trash company or in, and more often than not, it's just sort of put out there after an eviction or something like that. But what we've observed is that we have way too many situations where there's furniture sitting in the street and, you know, it's not the usual, hey, waste management will be here in two days. So we've had to actually address probably eight cases just like this where it's an eviction or, you know, someone kicked their child out or whatever it is. But anyway, we're staying on top of these things and that makes for a good before and after picture. Yeah, this is, again, a typical example of what a couple of our homeowners have to look at next door. And so we have to feel the kind of complaints and help mitigate these situations so we can improve the quality of life of those folks because it's very heartbreaking to hear those calls when people say, oh, I don't want to live in Livingston anymore or anything like that. So again, we have to put on our, our sales hat and say, trust me, we're gonna work on this. As a matter of fact, because it impacts you the most, we're gonna have the folks responsible take care of this pile before this one, so, you know, you don't have to... take care of this pile before this one, so, you know, you don't have to smell the debris, things like that. I know it sounds arduous, but again, Officer Holt is on the task, and she's keeping those property owners in place, and we haven't heard as many comments like that, so I'm happy to say that's the case. This is a brand-new issue that came to light just a few days ago, over at fourteen thirty-eight D Street. I believe it came in as an illegal habitation in a commercial building. It was just a kind of a usual type of complaint, where someone was pretty sure that there were folks living in this commercial space, and they knew that, hey, that's supposed to be a business, it's not supposed to be a habitation. And so, again, our code enforcement officer casually went over and discovered that there was a, quite the operation going on. Unfortunately, you see in the third slide over, that's the arm of the occupant that was there, blocking a good shot of a bank of computers. Anyway, it was all sorts of illicit gambling operations. It was very sophisticated. The police were brought in right away, you know, with an exigent circumstance-type mindset, and we were able to clear out this situation, and it's still actively being investigated by the police to see where these folks headed off to and why they decided to set up shop here in Livingston. So that's, that was a good success story, very recent, been completely taken care of. Any questions, folks?
Any questions from public? Counsel? Well, we appreciate the hard work you put in. I know it's time-consuming, I've done that job before, and it's actually rewarding once you get a area cleaned up. Like you mentioned, sometimes it's, you know, it gets cleaned up, and then you're back to square one, you know, a little later, but we do appreciate the hard work you put in, and, you know, that's what it's about, improving the quality of life here in Livingston. Just like you mentioned, some citizens have, I've seen that for so many years, and finally it's, something's being done, so that's our goal, you know, make our community look good and just attract people to want to come to Livingston, and businesses to come to Livingston.
Our goals are aligned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other staff members? To city council members, oh, no, city manager, I'm sorry, city manager announcements and reports.
Yes, Honorable Mayor and Counsel, thank you very much. One particular project that we met with today that I know Councilmember Grupal will be more than happy to share some additional information, but we're working together with the Livingston Unified School District and MCOE, because they're proposing to have a Head Start facility in their, in the acreage that you see between Sixth and Seventh. That's going to be pretty awesome, can't wait until we provide them with all the information that they need, so that they can, you know, continue to develop that area and serve our community, so that's one particular project that's really awesome. The other, the other project is, as it relates to economic development, Councilmember Grupal and I, we went to the ICSC conference, and we went prepared, because we took with us, first of all, we had several meetings that were already lined up prior to our meeting, prior to us leaving, and then while we were there, we actually took together a matrix that we developed that had the APN numbers, the mailing address, physical address, the actual contact information, whether there was water in sewer, the APN numbers, et cetera, of properties that were available within the city for development. And so we had an opportunity to talk to a lot of different franchisees. I see Andy's here, he's, he has his ears up. So, there's quite a bit of interest, actually, from franchisees like Wendy's, especially that, I know you guys were looking at developing that property on the other side that you guys acquired back from next to the Taco Bell. But we talked to everybody from Chipotle to Queso, to Wendy's, to Denny's, and the list goes on. And, and we looked at their cut sheets to see, you know, if we were in the ballpark, you know, of course, we're not going to visit those folks that, I mean, we're not even close, because when you go to these expos, they actually have booths, and they have an actual marketing sheet that give you the parameters of, you know, kind of what they're looking for. So we look, look at working with Mr. Gallow and yourself, Andy, to make the connections and help bring in more economic development activity. Yeah, 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 absolutely. Come on in.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. You definitely were at that conference, because I do represent, first of all, my name is Andy Krotik, resident of Batwater. I represent the Gallow family and their properties, but also represent the Yagi family. And I'm working with a national chain who's interested in locating on the Yagi family, and the gentleman I'm dealing with was raving about how the city of Livingston was represented at the conference and was open for business, so kudos to you guys, because it worked.
Well, thank you, thank you very much. So, so anyways, there's quite a bit of activity there, we want to keep that going. It's no secret that, that, you know, we've been able to secure the Arco AM PM on that property, and so we're on our way in opening up the hammet, you know, zone there for commercial development as well. And, and so, very soon, we, we're, the, we don't have a date yet, but the corporate fellows from Motel Six will be coming down, and we're having the ribbon-cutting ceremony, everybody's invited. I'm sure they'll have more than cookies for us, but, so we're working on that. And then, as it relates to, you know, some of the next steps, counsel, as it relates to our infrastructure here in the community, as it relates to TCP and funding sources, thank you for the, you know, supporting this bond. If this is, if this bond actually gets through the voters, there's going to be funding there for us to be able to, you know, go after, because that's going to be essential. Had an opportunity to talk to the MID representatives and our supervisor today, because MID is going to be a very important, a very important partner, that is, because of our long-term sustainability as it relates to our water portfolio, so looking forward to continuing that relationship and partnership. And then, we met with Congressman Costa yesterday, and we actually outlined three areas that I think that he can assist with. One was help with, with our post office, hopefully refreshing the post office and giving it a nice, you know, a facelift, et cetera. We're currently helping the post office with keeping the weeds down and things of that nature around the facility, because they've actually had some issues there. The second thing we asked for was assistance with, with surface water in the future, and because I know they're working on several legislations related to that with MID. And then lastly, of course, specifically about funding sources for any of our constituents that we have issues with, like TCP and arsenic. So, that's what I left them with, and that's it for tonight, unless you have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Jose. Any questions? Hopefully, we can get some businesses, I think we're in the right, in the right direction, so.
Yeah, Grupal will give the thunder out, I'll defer that, yeah.
I think, I think it's a win-win situation, we get businesses and the economy and jobs and, you know, it keep everything going, so.
When we show our accomplishments, I expect this council to buy dinner for me and the city manager. Whatever opens, we'll be more than happy to take dinner there, okay?
All right, thank you, Jose. One of the city council members, announcements and reports?
So, since our last meeting, I did a lobbying day in Sacramento for the League of California Cities, hitting on some key points that represent our city and also the league. I also went to Washington DC for the One Voice trip, along with our mayor. We were broken up into different strike teams, mine was more focused on water and USDA issues. Cover a lot around there, really found a lot of opportunities for us to fund some of our water projects with the USDA in different areas. A lot of my time was spent more with MID and focusing on our spillway and more issues relating to them, but those issues directly impact our water quality here in Livingston. And beyond that, Monday nights are a lot of fun at my house. We have the music in the park, so I go sit on my porch and listen to it, and encourage you all to come out and listen to the fun music. We had the Beatles here on Monday, and it was a good time. Nothing further.
Thank you, council member. Councilmember Aguilar?
I don't have anything tonight.
Thank you, councilmember Cicados.
Just want to kudos, where's Jackie? Is she hiding somewhere? Thank you, baseball season's over, and I just want to extend a big thank you to all the coaches, I mean, all the volunteer work that goes out there. Just extend a bit thank you with everything, and of course, Jackie, thank you for everything.
Vice Mayor Sama?
Oh, to add on to what city manager said, and Mr. Krotik's already confirmed, some of the folks we talked to, they said we were the most organized. We were the ones with the APN numbers and property owner's cellphone numbers. They said they want to talk to him, so we can get you on the phone right now. Really? Yes, we can, you know? And some of the folks that already contacted, we talked to them that day, and the next thing we're getting emails says we're already talking, and there are others that are, you know, they're all national chains, but some of them are a little more slower getting, but I do anticipate some good things, and I, you know, and I have to give a lot of kudos to Jose, I thought he only knew everybody in Washington DC. He knew everybody in Las Vegas, too, you know, so you can't go anywhere without him knowing somebody, you know, he's out there hugging everybody, and I said, don't hug him, no, 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 and I mean, in a fully respectful way, folks, okay? He's out there, oh, I know, and I said, and I said, don't hug him, just get him to sign that thing, and let's get them into town, you know, so, you know, so it was really, really successful, and I want to thank the council and the folks in Livingston to allow us the opportunity to go out there, and hopefully, it'll be more than just folks that have contacted, others will contact as well. But they were looking at Livingston, and we were good at tag teaming, he'd do that, and I'll be talking the political side of it. You know, you've got thirty-five, forty thousand cars going through there every day, you know, even if ten percent of those stops, you know what the number of those is? So, you know, we're out there, you know, so it was really good, and we were very encouraged. And also, I noticed Mr. Aguilar didn't speak much, are you still depressed about the guns and hoses? Fear not, next year. Okay, fear not.
All right, thank you, Vice Mayor, and thank you, Jose, that, look forward to Livingston, and the community look forward to, hopefully, you know, bringing some businesses and enhancing, you know, the services and bringing some jobs here and, you know, boosting the economy, so we look forward to that. So, what I have is, it's like Councilmember Caso, we attended One Voice with Merced County Area Government, we had different strike force and different teams, and there's a couple of things I was interested on the public safety side, and that was, there's grants available for school resource officers. I know the chief was there, so that's, you know, something that maybe we could look at, you know, enhancing, you know, in light of all the things going on in the country with schools, you know, I just want to make sure our kids are safe, and, you know, not just in our community, but everywhere. And then there was another program or grant, it was about keying all the schools the same, and it's basically having one master key for an emergency that, you know, it could be placed at the police department, and if it needed an emergency, this key would not unlock, you know, Yamara would unlock Salma Hernan, and it would unlock the high school, you know, in exigent circumstances, we would, you know, if they're all keyed differently, you know, we're going to have to wait to, law enforcement would have to wait for someone to come unlock the key, or if we had, I guess what they call it, is the God key that unlocks everything, our response time would be a lot quicker having that key to unlock any of the schools, and that would go for, you know, public safety, law enforcement, or a fire department, so that's kind of one program I would, you know, like to see, or a grant to see if we can, we can get that, so. And Sergeant Fogg, you let the chief know, thank you for having animal control out on the weekend. I called one weekend on a pit bull that was chasing me, and I wasn't running too fast, luckily I had my stick, and they went out Saturday, so maybe we can try and get animal control out at least once a weekend, just for, you know, especially now that the weather's warmer, we'll have a lot of people more walking, so. On that, I don't have anything else. If you want to move on to item five, public hearing, resolution approving site plan and design review twenty eighteen dash oh-one for Foster Farms' plant expansion, addition of eight four-three Davis Street, Livingston, California, assessors parcel number zero two four dash zero two zero dash zero two one.
That'll be great. One side or the other, so I can see my notes here. Okay, well, thank you for having me here with a planning commission report on the site plan and design review for an expansion and addition of the Foster Farms plant at eight forty-three Davis Street. Foster Farms is proposing to expand their current chicken processing plant to include additional processing facilities. And with the slide, I'll, the next one. What we're looking at is, is here's the entire plant, and it's right in here that currently is a landscaped employee picnic area and open area, and, and then there are some paved, and as you can see back in here, there's some parking areas and so forth. And so Foster Farms has identified this area as a site to expand and make some additions to their plant. And what they're doing is they are opening up a new processing line to respond to consumer demands for different chicken products. Now, this is an important part of Foster Farms being able to continue to respond to customer needs and to maintain the plant as a profitable, active part of their operations. Now, they are, from a planning point of view, what they're proposing to do is add eighty thousand-plus square feet of square footage, and of the new building, and we'll go to the next slide if we can, Anthony. And it shows, it's a two-story structure, it's thirty-five feet high with some rooftop mechanical units. In addition to the new processing space, the building will include offices, restrooms, break rooms, storage, shipping areas, and a truck dock. They will be moving an existing truck dock to this facility, because the truck, existing truck- because the truck, existing truck dock will, um, have its access cut off by this building. So the truck dock is an important, uh, feature as well. Uh, the building will be a concrete tilt-up construction with the first floor elevation enhanced by a concrete block finish and a stucco, um, finish as well. Now, the important thing from, um, a variety of, of environmental and planning points of view is that the expansion will not result in any additional, um, impact on the community. The, um, the employees that are going to be working in this new facility come from the existing, um, plant. Some of those lines that have less, um, activity because of, uh, consumer, not as great demand for the product, they're moving those folks to this line. So, um, there's no additional traffic that's coming in from employees, no additional need for parking spaces. Um, it, it again keeps the plant responding, uh, to, um, customers', um, shopping desires and so forth. Uh, one of the, just as an aside, one of the things they'll be doing less of is whole chickens. Customers aren't buying whole chickens anymore. They're buying, um, um, more prepared chickens, parts and, and strips and things of that nature. And so this is part of the, um, um, demand that this line will address. As I mentioned, um, one of the things, um, we have to look at is the environmental effects because this is considered a project under the California Environmental Quality Act at the state level. So, um, we looked at this and carefully documented the, um, that it wouldn't represent significant increases in traffic, significant increases in parking needs and, and so on. So, um, it was able to qualify on the various categories as a, um, let me get the, the right notation here, as a infill project. And so it, it met all those, uh, criteria and so, um, we're using the infill categorical exemption. Fundamentally, it's, it's a simplified environmental review process, uh, because it meets all of these. Again, the property is properly zoned with a general plan for industrial and the zoning for industrial. The project will consist of real allocation of existing employees, avoiding any new traffic or parking impacts. All the city's, um, setback, area height and parking standards are met. The building's design and, um, materials comply with the city's, um, suggestions and guidelines. And in, in all respects, it, um, it complies with all of our standards. And then looking at it from our general plan issues, it's, um, maintains our general plan goal of maintaining employment and enhancing employment opportunities in the city. So from, um, uh, we took, the staff took this to the planning commission for their meeting in November, May, sorry, in May, May eighth, and, uh, after a review and various questions, the commission felt that the proposed expansion would be an asset and beneficial to the community and recommended approval, um, to you, the, the city council. And staff, um, is of the opinion that the proposed expansion would be an asset, would be beneficial. We concur with the planning commission's recommendation. And, uh, we have included in the resolution, um, for approval, various, um, conditions of approval. Um, and those were all recommended by the planning commission. So we bring that to your attention and recommend that you, um, approve the resolution to include those. And, um, basically that's the summary of it. And are there any questions that I could address?
Thank you, Randy. Open up for any public comment. Nine oh three. Nobody coming forward. We'll bring it back to council for any questions.
Before council, uh, communicates, I just would like to let everybody know that, um, that, uh, the applicant will submit the, uh, improvement plans that will then, uh, go to the city engineering's department and they will basically review and, and approve, uh, you know, and, and set conditions. So, in this particular case, the, the applicant wanted to, you know, get the ball rolling sooner and they, and they're taking on the risks. Uh, but as good neighbors, you know, and a good partner, we, you know, we're, we're walking hand in hand with them. So we look forward to this project and if it's not my, I don't know where I heard this, but I believe, you know, as you know, Chick-fil-A, this is for you, Andy, uh, Chick-fil-A is be, is, is having a bigger and bigger presence in California. There's a couple of, of places that opened up in Fresno. I'm not sure where the next, uh, closest. But, you know, if, if Livingston happens to fit in their, uh, criteria with, I think, I mean, you can't get any fresher chicken than that. They'll be alive, you know, they're just down the street.
When I was talking with the company representative, they indicate that this, um, expansion would be to serve, um, Chick-fil-A as it expands in California.
Yeah, as, uh, I, city manager and I told the Chick-fil-A folks in Vegas, anything fresher is still walking around, so you need to come to Livingston.
And, yeah, and, uh, you know, but, but my, my best, um, uh, moment was when we came up to seven-eleven and, you know, they had a line of people and, and so we just said, "Hey, wait a minute, uh, wouldn't my council member have a, you know, a ticket to be the front of the line?" And, you know, they started laughing.
Yeah, he was referring to a lot of Indian people on seven-elevens. So that's what he was referring to. You have to explain it properly.
You know, one of the, one of the things we, we do do in the city to try to aid, uh, economic development is we do allow, at their risk, as the city manager has mentioned, but they decided to go ahead and submit some of their plans, um, for plan check because that is a, it is a big project. So it, it takes some time to do that. And so after the planning commission endorsed the project, then they went ahead and started getting the plan checking done and some of these other preliminary, um, work that takes time. So that we're kind of double counting time as, as it's coming to you, uh, for consideration. Some of the technical, uh, work for, um, the details that, uh, will be done in the building permit are being checked as we speak.
Hey, Randy, if everything's approved and they got the, the green light, when would they expect to start, um, once everything's approved?
Don't have a good, um, answer to that, but it is a priority for them, so they are moving on it. As the city manager mentioned, um, after approvals, um, we will be using some of these conditions that are here, um, from the public works and engineering to, to get those squared away. I think we've already had one, um, um, review at the, um, building plan check level. So, um, assuming you make no changes, um, they will address that and then, and then go forward. So I think, um, we're, we're moving it much faster than normally would be the case.
Thank you. Any other questions?
So we're approving or moving it forward with the condition or the way it's on the adopting?
I, I recommend that you approve the, um, um, resolution as written. It does contain, um, the, um, memo that, um, it was, is on, um, the bench there, the dais, that inadvertently was not included in your packet. It was included in the planning commission's recommendation to you. We discovered it was missing, um, after the packet was sent, so it's there for full disclosure. But that's part of the resolution that's before you.
Okay, so I move to approve. If anybody?
You made the motion to approve?
Yes. Adopt the resolution approving site plan and design review twenty eighteen dash oh one for the expansion addition of the Foster Farms plant at eight forty-three Davis Street, Livingston, California. APN number zero-two-four dash zero-two-zero dash zero-two-one.
I will second that.
Okay, roll call. Council member Mcafe?
Aye.
Council member Aguilar?
Yes.
Council member Cicaros?
Yes.
This is a public hearing, so I think, I think he called for comments, but perhaps, uh,
Torres, I had opened it up earlier. Did you want to make a comment?
Yeah, is, are you, is it for a public comment on the, the general section or for this item?
We'll give you, we'll give you a microphone.
Here, here we go.
Hey, we, we, we take care of folks.
And I just want to ask you, is that on this line, you're trying to, uh, improve the, the improvement on the new line? Okay, is it going to take more water than the other one?
Good question. Um, from what we understand is that, um, that we did send to the public works department and the water division looked at it, um, preliminarily and said it should be fine. That's part of the details that, that, um, those conditions of approval will ensure. So the final, um, review of all of that, um, is in the next few weeks.
Hey, Mike?
We don't anticipate it to, um, be a demand on, uh, on water. Since we are closing some other lines.
And the line that you're trying to, you only use the same employees over the other one?
Same, same number of employees. There, there may be shift around a little bit.
So what happens to the old line?
Um, it's being discontinued.
It'll take out.
And so they'll, uh, maybe instead of having, um, two shifts a day, they may have, uh, one shift three days or something in that figure.
But it'll still be usable?
It should, from the information that I got, it's lack of customer, um, use is causing the, um, shift over. And, and as we talked about, if, um, the new customer Chick-fil-A's product, the paywall is different than, um, you know, the whole chickens for, um, roasting than Costco one. And so I think that's some of their customers that are switching is they're going to Chick-fil-A and less Costco.
And what were your structure going to become by now? The, the material?
Um, it's concrete tilt-up construction and then it has, um, masonry block, um, exterior for, um, appearance. And there's also stucco, uh, finish for appearance.
Okay, that's all I wanted.
Okay, great.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Torres.
So we do the motion again?
We'll bring it back to, uh, council member Cicaros. Was there a motion? Okay, we have a motion from, uh, councilor Cicaros and a second from Vice Mayor Samra. So we'll go and take roll call, please.
Okay, roll call. Council member Mcafe?
Aye.
Council member Aguilar?
Yes.
Council member Cicaros?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Samra?
Yes.
Mayor Soria?
Yes.
Motion approved?
I'll move on to citizens' comments. This section of the agenda allows members of the public to address the city council on any item not otherwise on the agenda. Members of the public, when recognized by the mayor, should come forward to the lectern and identify themselves. Comments are normally limited to three minutes in accordance with the state open meeting laws. No action will be taken by the city council this evening. For items which are on the agenda this evening, members of the public will be provided an opportunity to address the city council as each item is brought up for discussion. So we are now open for citizen comments.
Okay, my question is the same one. It's about our Channel Two government station. We have the picture but no sound. And I've been asking this and you guys kept telling me, "Well, we can't do it. We can't do it." Why not? We paid forty thousand dollars for the system. Why even air it?
Yeah, but, Mr. Torres, thank you very much. We're, we're as equally as frustrated as you are. As a matter of fact, uh, yesterday when we met with Congressman Costa, uh, that was actually brought up in our discussions with him and, uh, to see if, 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 if we can somehow find a way to remedy. Because as, as you know, our, our cable company here and our, and our, uh, telephone service company here, uh, you know, they even closed shop, you know, they, they closed the office here, so we don't have office hours. So, uh, we are tackling it, you know, hopefully we can, we can get some headway. But as far as the, the, uh, what the, the actual, uh, service is right now, uh, I haven't had any complaints. So, uh, I don't know if anybody else, uh, has heard any complaints about, uh, folks home not being able to hear or see the council meetings. There was money spent to address those with our, in my, um, with our IT company. But if, if there's something else that's going on that we don't know, please, please let us know.
Okay. Yeah, cause, uh, when I have the, my copy meeting with some of the boys, you know, they call it, they call it the modern day silent movie. So, I mean, the picture's fine.
But the audio is, 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 there's issues. So, so we're gonna have to check into that because, uh, again, there hasn't been any complaints in the last several months that, that I know of, so. But we'll check. Thank you for bringing it to our attention, Mr. Torres.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, if, uh, for some reason you're not able to attend the council meeting, you're watching at home, just, uh, call in the next day, say, "Hey, we couldn't get audio" and then, uh, we'll look into it.
Yeah. Thank you.
Bob Wallace, sixteen ninety-seven Spruce Court, uh, mayor, council. Just one quick, uh, comment. I attended the MCAG open house last week. We didn't have very big turnout, but the issue that affected me the most and then I brought it up with two or three of the people from MCAG that were there. They had some nice colored brochures, about thirty, forty pages. They had eight of them, all in English. The only one that was beneficial to was me because the other four or five people that were here were all speaking Spanish. They did not have any brochure in Spanish. Then it was like, "Wait a minute, you come into a city like Livingston and you don't have any Spanish brochures to give them?" They had to deal with one lady interpreting one-on-one. I goes, "Wait, with this county's Hispanic, Spanish population, I would have assumed there should have been a Spanish book there." It was just a funny comment and nobody had an answer to me why they didn't have one. And they didn't have one the previous night in Los Manos either. So I just want, somebody needs to find out why. And then how was it advertised in the city that, that open house? And then my email that comes from MCAG, that comes to the city, my city email, goes into spam. I almost missed it. You know, I would have thought MCAG would be an authorized user coming into our city emails, but, I mean, I found it because I got the spam notice when it rerouted to my primary email. But I, it was just shocking that it went to spam and I almost didn't catch what it was from to even know about the meeting. And that's all I have.
Let me see if there's anyone else. Any, any other comments?
Thank you, Mr. Wallace. Uh, I will put that on the agenda for the next MCAG meeting for us to go over that and, uh, try to rectify that.
If you have no other comments, we'll go and close it at nine eighteen. And we will move on to the consent agenda. Items on the consent calendar are considered routine and non-controversial and will be enacted by one vote unless separate action is requested by the city manager or city council member. There will be, there will be no separate discussion on these items unless members of the city council, city manager request that specific items be removed. We item, we have items on the consent agenda, item six through ten. Six, approval of minutes meeting held on March twenty, twenty eighteen. Seven, approval of minutes meeting held on April third, twenty eighteen. Eight, approval of warrant registered dated May nine, twenty eighteen. Nine, approval of warrant registered dated May thirty-first, twenty eighteen. And ten, waive the second reading and adopt ordinance number six-three-four, approving the third amendment to the development agreement between the City of Livingston and J E G Livingston Ranches L C concerning fifteen point nine acres northeast of the intersection of Robin Avenue and B Street, Livingston, California.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second?
All right, we have a first from Councilmember McCabe, second from Councilmember Juan Aguilar.
Okay, roll call. Councilmember McCabe?
Aye.
Councilmember Aguilar?
Yes.
Councilmember Sekairos?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Samra?
Yes.
Mayor Soria?
Yes.
Motion approved?
Next, we have item eleven. It's a resolution updating the Livingston Police Department records slash animal fees table.
Evening, council. Basically, what we're looking at is adjusting some of the fee schedules that we have for some of the services that we provide. Three in particular we're looking at. First one deals with the vehicle release. Pretty much all agencies charge for vehicle release fees. There's a lot involved in whenever we impound or tow a store vehicle. Involves an officer taking care of the initial report, dispatcher entering into the state system, supervisor reviewing it. And then when they come to take the vehicle out, then sometimes the supervisor has to approve that. The dispatcher has to take care of the paperwork to release the vehicle. Currently, we have two-step schedule, eighty dollars for non-D U I vehicle releases and one twenty-five for D U I release. We kind of want to combine that into one fee so instead of having two-tiered. With the staff report, you kind of see some of the examples of other agencies that charge well over $200 for the vehicle release fee. We're suggesting one sixty-five. Let me double check. Yeah, one sixty-five vehicle release fee across the board. The second item has to deal with police reports. For regular reports, we generally don't charge for those. We are allowed by law to charge for anything over ten pages. We currently do not charge on traffic collision reports. And what we're asking is if we can impose a fifteen-dollar fee for those, mostly because the reason we don't want to charge for reports in general is, you know, it's for our public, the people we serve anyways. Collision reports, generally, the people that pull those are insurance companies. And almost all of them, when they come and ask for them, they're always surprised that we don't charge for it. Because a lot of times, we'll get a check because they're expecting us to charge them for, and we don't. So we like to charge fifteen-dollar fee for that. The fees range from fifteen dollars on up for other agencies. So that's not a huge fee. On the third one, basically, there's a fee schedule for picking up animals from homeowners or animal owners. We pretty much do not provide that service anymore. We just have them take them to the shelter. So we're looking at just eliminating that fee altogether. Any questions?
Any open of public comment? And close it back at nine twenty-three. Do you have any questions, council?
Yeah. How did you determine the vehicle release number? I mean, I understand that you looked at other jurisdictions, but how did you actually come to that number?
Basically, that's what we're looking at compared, you know, compared to other agencies, what they charge. And, you know, we really didn't sit down and count out the man-hours because it's different per incident, depending on what the, what the situation is. So, you know, mostly it's just an average of.
Are we doing a large amount of tow release, of releases every month?
Yeah, we did.
Like how many?
I could honestly couldn't give you.
Is there a ballpark, like two hundred?
I would say we probably tow somewhere between twenty and forty vehicles a month.
Okay.
Are we trying to raise the fees because other jurisdictions have them higher or just because?
Yeah, we really haven't increased our fees in over ten years. So it really doesn't reflect the actual cost, you know, as far as the man-hours involved in this whole process.
I hate to increase them just because everybody else has them higher.
I don't want to increase them, Martino. I mean, unless, unless you can actually, you know, show that it's costing us that much to do it, I don't like any fees going to citizens that we can't show the justification of that cost. And just because someone else is charging it, doesn't seem like a valid enough reason for me to increase that one.
Yeah, the original fee, and I'm not sure how they came up with originally because I wasn't here, but again, was set ten years ago.
So it's been ten years. I'm on, I'm on the contrary. I, I don't agree with D U I or driving under the influence. I would like to see that release go up to at least one fifty, one seventy-five.
Are they different?
Yeah, currently, we have a two-tier system. For D U Is, it's higher. For non-D U Is, it's eighty. For D U Is, it's one twenty-five. I mean, we kind of wanted to make it one fee all the way out.
Yeah, oh, okay. See, the proposed is one sixty-five. I would probably even, you know, on the fourteen-sixes, the suspension, that's a different fee?
That's the eighty.
That's eighty?
Yeah.
And then on the twelve-five-hundred, driving without a license, that's eighty also?
Yeah.
Because on the proposed, it just has one sixty-five just across the release, so.
I'm sorry, the twelve-five, fourteen-six is also one twenty-five. So the eighty would be for like expired registration, that type of thing.
So on the proposed, it has one sixty-five?
Yeah, for everything.
That's what you want to go to regardless if it's twelve-five, fourteen-six?
Yeah, make it easy one fee.
Well, I know there's a, with fees, it requires, it's time-consuming. You have to get paperwork, the one-eighties and all that. So it takes time out of staff to get the release and do that. So if it's been ten years, we're definitely behind ten years. So I'd actually like to see the vehicle release go up to one seventy-five. You know, it's only five bucks more, but I think it says precedence too, especially if you're, you know, a couple days ago, if I'm not mistaken, there was a D U I driver driving across, over Hammett, and he crashed into three kids, seniors that were coming from a bonfire chain, you know. So I would rather, you know, have that fee increased to, you know, be more of a deterrent. Hey, if you're going to drunk drive and you're going to lose your vehicle and that's going to cost you. So, you know, I'm more hard on crimes. I'd actually like to see that be higher than the one sixty-five. That's my opinion.
But that's not how fees are legally done. Fees need to be a justification of what the actual cost is to a city, not a form of deterrent, is my understanding.
Well, if we haven't raised it in ten years, and, you know, then we're due for it, it should also be a deterrent. So, you know, if you, if you plan on drinking and driving, you're going to lose your vehicle. If you're going to drive on a suspended license and you get caught, you're going to lose your vehicle. So I think, you know.
I mean, I'm not going to argue for drunk driving. I mean, I'm not in support of drunk driving whatsoever or any impaired driving.
But if we haven't raised fees in ten years, then we should, you know, you know, be a little bit, you know, trying to catch up with the times. If, you know, if you, you drive on a suspended license, you're going to lose your car. If you drive drunk, you're going to lose your car, and there's going to be a fee to it. So, you know, I think ten years is way overdue of not having an increase. Now, the, the proposed on the, you know, the non-spayed neutered dog, one hundred and twenty-five, I think that's a little excessive. I think that should go down. That's my opinion, to a hundred for three years. But, you know, vehicle releases, if it's been ten years, I think it's time that we go even a little bit higher. You know, we should see, you know, if the chief checked to see what Atwater's fees are and Turlock's and.
Yeah, I was under a report.
If I may make a comment, mayor. Just about fees, that's correct. Usually, there's, sometimes there's tiers regarding the D U Is, et cetera, because it takes more time. But it's all based on time. It's not just because of neighboring cities or other cities. It's not, you don't take a poll to set your fees. It's really taking in account how much time does it really take in order to perform the, the work. And you're right, the D U Is usually in some jurisdictions are really high because once you start looking at it, there's a lot of, a lot of work that's being done by the, by the police, the police department in order to make sure, to go through that process. And just real quick regarding the, the non-spayed neuter, neutered dogs, I don't think there's, the proposal is not to increase it. I think that the current, if you're looking at the, the, the current and the proposed, I believe it's the same. It's the one twenty-five for the, for the three years. And that was put in, I know by many jurisdictions, that was put in as a deterrent as well because of everything that non-spayed or neutered animals do cause and all the impacts that they cause out there.
Yeah, as for animal control, we're eliminating just the listed fee because it's a service we don't provide anymore, which is picking up unwanted animals. But I know, I know nobody asked it, but I'm sure it's going to come up as a question. If we tow a car for like a victim, like of a stolen vehicle or something, we don't charge those people because they're victims, so they don't get charged for it.
The proposal you submitted us doesn't actually have it removed, the dead animal pickup.
The entire line item's gone. If you look at the original.
Oh, okay.
It's animal pickup from owner, transportation fee, twenty dollars, second line from the bottom.
So why, so what are the dead animal pickups from owner, then the other two, they're still there?
The dead animals?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's still there because that's still a service that we provide.
Oh, that's for live animals for us to pick them?
It's like unwanted animal.
Any questions, council?
Well, it's, it's up to the council what you want to, what you want to deal with it. If, if there's direction in order to look at more of like the, the impound fees, the UI fees, et cetera, you can always continue the item. You know, those are one of the major, one of the main fees that were being changed, one of the few fees that are being proposed changed. You continue the item and direct staff to, to provide a little more of a comprehensive look at those. You can also approve the rest of them, the rest of the changes, except for that one until further look. Or you could approve what you have now and come back completely after the council.
I'm actually fine with the proposed. I was just saying on the release, it should be a little bit more. But I want to go ahead and make a motion to approve this.
Hand's still open. Sorry, you threw me off there. I, I don't want us to be a profit center of our citizens or be looking at, you know, our towing as a way for us to supplement our budget. Right now, we're looking at maybe a thirty-four-hundred dollar increase from the, to our police budget from this. But we're still paying our staff if they work or not, if they have to tow vehicles or not. So I'm not seeing a, a true justification at this point for me to justify increasing it because eighty dollars to a lot of our citizens is still a lot of money. I'm not in favor, and I encourage other council members to vote no if they're, if the motion goes as it stands.
I'd like to see more justification, not because other cities have higher fees and we haven't increased ours. Is it really costing us the money for the fees? That's more of what I want to come from. So, I mean, I know there was a motion, so.
I mean, does it change our budget at all? I mean.
Yeah, it would, it would reduce the impact of the effort and the time involved.
Yeah, but we're paying you no matter what.
Correct. So it's to the city's benefit.
I mean, I just saw a report last week that we have one of the lowest crime rates in Merced County. In fact, I was, I was, I was bragging about on Facebook about how, how well our police officers have created our community to where we have reduced crime. I'm not, I'm just not excited about charging more money to our citizens, and we already have budgeted your guys' budget. The money is there for you guys. If you're doing your job, it doesn't change anything.
Yeah. I know, I mean, in a sense, you can kind of looking at it as offsetting the cost from the taxpayer who, you know, has to pay taxes no matter what to the people who are causing that use of man-hours.
Right. So where does that money go, Jose?
Well, as you know, our police budget's about sixty percent. All of the funds that are directed in, in that, to that department is, is, is twofold. One, it's, it's all money, you know, it's all general fund money. So that's our general fund money. So basically, what Sergeant Fong is telling you is that if, if, if funding sources come to pay for those, you know, based on, on the, on actual cost, then, then you have money left over for other priorities. So that's just one way they're looking at it. Now, if, if the council's priority is, well, you know what, this specific line item, we want to keep it the same, and we want to, the, the rest of the items, we're in agreement, and we can move forward on that. That's, that's your prerogative. So.
But so it goes to the general fund, though? The, the additional fees, it wouldn't go to the police budget, but it goes to our general fund?
Well, police budget, it is general fund.
Right, but I mean.
Yeah, we don't, we don't.
It comes to us, and then we assign it to the police budget.
That's correct. That's correct. Yeah, we don't, there is some, there are some fees out there that we, you know, specifically, you know, set aside for, but in this particular case, all of these fees all go back into the general fund and get reallocated.
Okay. So a max of maybe thirty thousand a year, maybe thirty-six, maybe forty thousand increase into our general fund and out of the pockets of our citizens?
No, it comes, it really comes down to, to your policy.
The exact numbers, of course.
You know, I mean, again, my recommendation is if, if this is a little bit of a, of a challenge for the council at this time for, for the D U I and the vehicle release, you know, if there's no issues with the other ones, you know, I'd suggest that you guys look at moving on those fees, and then we can always come back and do a little more work and analysis on, on, and allow the chief to also provide some additional input.
Okay.
Well, I'm going to chime in because I did law enforcement, and it's time-consuming doing all this paperwork. And there's an efficiency process, and we're talking about not charging people. Then why do we charge people when they get citations? You know, you run a stop sign, you're going to get a fee. You drunk drive, your car's going to get taken, you're going to get charged. Tickets and citations are deterrent for people to obey the law. Same thing with losing your vehicle. Hey, you know what? I'm not going to take the chance because I work. If I lose my vehicle, I'm not going to get behind the wheel. Unfortunately, a lot of that stuff doesn't happen. So, you know, you run a stop sign and you get caught, you're going to get a, you're going to get a fee, just plain and simple. And whether the, and it's been ten years since we've had a fee increase, then we're due to increase our fees. And yeah, that'll go into the budget. But at the same time, if we haven't increased our fees in ten years, I think that also it could be a deterrent. If that could keep someone off the street and running into me that's drunk or on a suspended license or running into my kids, then I'm all, I'm all for it. You know, and, and, you know, if it's a deterrent, it's a deterrent. But we're also due for our fees increase.
Are we making a deterrent, though, or are we just doing a fee increase? Because a deterrent and a fee increase are two separate things.
It's combined all in one.
So you think if, if I know it's going to cost me eighty dollars more, I'm not going to drink and drive?
It could possibly be. There's people that have made comments, you know what, I'm not going to get behind the wheel because I, I have the chance. I'm not gonna get behind the wheel because I, I have the chance of getting stopped and losing my vehicle.
No, very true.
So, you know, so I, and, you know, ten years and we haven't increased these fees and other cities have, I think it's, you know, uh, you know, I, I, I think it's time, it's, it's due that, you know, I'm, I'm okay with the proposed. We're not going as high as, you know, some of the other cities listed here, but, you know, I, uh, you know, you're gonna take the chance if you, you know, you, you get stopped and, you know, you're drunk driving and you lose your car, maybe next time you won't do it. If you drive on a suspended license and you get stopped, you're gonna lose your car. If that's gonna keep my family safe and the community safe, you know, it's gonna cost you a little bit more money, maybe it will be a deterrent. So that's what I'm thinking of, safety. So I would not wanna pay extra money and lose your vehicle because you were, you know, on top of all the other fees you gotta do, so it's all about safety for me. If it's a deterrent from keeping you, maybe it is, maybe it's not, but I think it's in, it's in the direction of deterring people. You know, if you're, that's, you're the breadwinner and you lose your car, how do you get your kids around? So don't drive on a suspended license, don't drink and drive, and you won't have to worry about those fees.
I think, I agree with you. I think it is a deterrent. Um, however, I know there's other situations where people get their car impounded that not, might not be criminal in nature or, um, maybe don't have the means to renew their registration or license. It would be, you know, different factors. So I actually would like to see it still separated. I don't mind having a, a fee of a hundred and sixty, five hundred and seventy for a DUI, um, and just keeping the other release at a lower amount, like eighty.
Well, working law enforcement, you know, the officer has the choice of towing the car or not. You can call a, a family member, hey, come get it. You know, I stopped this person, they're unlicensed, you know. Uh, it's all, it's all, it's all on, on the officer's decision, so. You know, so to me, just the fee is a deterrent.
Mr. Mayor?
I'm not gonna get into the officers deciding whether they're gonna tow it or not.
We shouldn't be, uh, we're sitting here in our comfortable chairs right now and we don't know what decisions you have to make, but I like, uh, Ms. Councilmember Aguilar's idea was compromise. Uh, I don't think none of us really want to see drunk drivers. We may sympathize with them until they hit one of our family members or somebody we know. Then we no longer have sympathy. So I don't, I, I've never had any mercy for drunk drivers. You know better, you're an adult. However, uh, Councilmember Aguilar is correct that if somebody, you know, if you can't pay your bill, your PG&E is about to be turned off and your vehicle registration is not due, do you leave the lights on? Do you take a chance on your registration? So I think it's, uh, good. So what I like to do, and I hope everybody supports it, is leave the vehicle release as it is and increase the DUI to one sixty-five.
Well, I'm gonna go back on that. The chief of police has a discretion of charging that fee or not charging that fee on vehicle releases. So if there is someone that stopped and they, maybe they don't have a license and their car is towed, the chief of police should have that discretion, whether he charges that fee or not, and gives them a warning, so that way, uh.
Yeah, I mean, but they can still, uh, the chief of police can still decide to waive or not to waive. We're just at the rough number for the, uh, for the department to say, here's what we recommend. And that, and of course, the chief of police does have discretion to modify and say, you know what? Uh, I understand your PG&E was about to be turned off and therefore, you know what? An interest of justice is what I've heard before, that we're gonna go ahead and just waive this, but please, uh, stay tuned for that, you know, and. But a DUI, you know, if you can afford to drink, then you can pay your fees. So I highly recommend, uh, that we, uh, leave it that way, Mr. Mayor, and I hope that you can see through it as well.
I, I don't agree. I have a motion, so if, you know, I have a motion. If it doesn't go through, then I understand where you're coming from. You wanna break it down, but there's too much, uh, involved in, okay, you did this, this is this fee, this is this fee. So I think to make it easier, there should be a flat fee. Um, you know, other cities, uh, from what I'm looking at, also have a, a, a flat fee and I think it's just gonna create more of a hassle breaking it down. Okay, you drove this, you drove that, you drove that, and there's a fee for this, there's a fee for that. So I think a one flat fee is, is okay, and especially if we haven't done it in ten years.
Well, uh, I, I understand your background and I know where you come from, but I think officers and everybody, they feel more sympathy for somebody that's just got an expired registration or something than they do for somebody that's clustered. You know, you're blowing something above what you're supposed to. I think as law enforcement, I think you would also support and say is, we wanna discourage, yes, it is a deterrent. I agree with you, but deterrent should be based on things that, I mean, can do a lot of damage. For example, and sometimes, and I do disagree with it, is in Merced County, if I were to run a stop sign, it's three hundred some odd dollars, but heavens forbid if I park in a handicap in a county building, it's over two thousand dollars. Is that a revenue generator or is that a deterrent? You know, I mean, come on, it's gotta be. There are some things to it, you know, and so.
Well, all those are revenue generators. You get a ticket, you go to court, you know, it's, you lose, or it's, it's gonna be paid to somebody, you know. And obviously, if you get a ticket running a stop sign, you're not gonna try and do it again, so. But I, I, I have a motion. If there's a second, then, you know, great. If not, then we could take it back. So I still have a motion to approve, uh, the proposed fees.
Okay, I don't think we have a second, so. All right, yeah, okay. Uh, what I like to do, and I like to make a motion that we accept the proposed fee schedule with a modification of eighty dollars for vehicle release for non-DUI and a, and, uh, increase it to one sixty-five for DUI.
I second it.
I have a first from Vice Mayor Samra stating DUI one sixty-five and non-DUI eighty. Second from Councilmember Aguilar, roll call.
Okay, Councilmember McCabe?
Aye.
Councilmember Aguilar?
Yes.
Councilmember Sekairos?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Samra?
Yes.
Mayor Soria?
No.
Motion approved, four to one.
Just clarification from legal counsel. Um, so with those modifications, the rest of the fees?
Is that as proposed?
As proposed. That's, that's correct. It was just, everything else was as proposed. That was the only modification.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, moving forward. Item twelve, resolution approving agreement between the city and Corporal Appender King for the sale of Livingston Police Department K-9 Kiki.
All right, so I'll start with a little history and most of you were here for most of it. Um, a few years back, back when marijuana was still illegal, we, um, purchased a canine, narcotics canine with then Officer Racky, who worked for us and has since moved on to Atwater. Um, one of the competing cities for officers, by the way. But anyways, at that time, as I said, marijuana was illegal, so the dog was trained to detect, um, methamphetamine, cocaine, marijuana, and heroin. Since then, um, aside from the officer leaving, Officer Kang has taken over the canine program and then became Corporal Kang, um, so now he's also a junior supervisor. Along with that, uh, the new laws passed as far as legal use of marijuana and possession of marijuana. So what has happened statewide and to all the other states that followed that same path is all your trained narcotics canines had to either be recertified to not alert on marijuana or they could not be certified at all. So we tried to get the dog certified and to not alert on marijuana, but it's a very hard process to do once the dog knows it, and, uh, that hasn't been overly successful. So legally, what that leaves us with is a dog that we cannot go before court and say, this is our probable cause because the dog alerted on this spot that we believe there's a, a illegal substance in there because now marijuana is no longer illegal. So in effect, the dog use as far as a narcotics canine is pretty much at an end. Um, so to tie that in as to why we're looking at, um, letting Officer, Corporal Kang purchase a dog, you know, as you know, police canines are considered officers legally in California, um, and it's been his partner for the last couple of years. Um, so, you know, it's, it's just, it seemed to be the right thing to do to let him keep the dog and take care of the dog, uh, you know, as compared to giving it to somebody who may not understand the training of the dog or has no attachment to the dog. Um, as far as the, uh, money involved in this, you know, as I said, we did purchase the dog as a rescue. Um, we paid three hundred dollars for the, for the fees as far as make, uh, rescuing the dog. Um, we spent some money revamping one of our patrol cars to be a canine car. Um, with this, what, what we're planning to do anyways is convert the car back to regular patrol use, so it'll be back into our fleet, um, which we sorely need. But also, uh, let's see where you. So the dog was trained with Officer Racky and Corporal Kang both, so the city covered the training on that. And, um, with the elimination of the dog, also the, the cost of maintaining the dog and the fees for the extra, um, assignment money for the officer also goes back into our budget. So that's the history behind this.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, uh, this is gonna be kinda weird, but in our culture, we never donate or ask for exact amount. If I were to donate to the church, I wouldn't give a hundred dollars, I'd give a hundred and one dollars. Don't ask me why, we just do. So if we agree, I don't want it to be a dollar, I want it to be a one dollar and one cent, just to teach Officer Corporal Kang that we recognize who you are. So it'll be one dollar and one cent is all I ask.
So is that a motion or?
I'll make the motion.
Open up to, uh, public.
Yeah, I'll make the motion.
Public comment on, uh, K-9 Kiki?
One dollar and one cent.
We have a motion from Vice Mayor Samra, uh, changing the fee from one dollar to one dollar and one cent.
I do wanna see it actually given, okay?
Retire K-9 Kiki. Do I have a second?
I second it.
All right, Councilmember Aguilar seconds, roll call.
Okay, roll call. Councilmember McCabe?
Aye.
Councilmember Aguilar?
Yes.
Councilmember Sekairos?
Well, I was gonna counter you, but, you know, just joking. Yes.
Mayor Protem Samra?
Yes.
Mayor Soria?
Yes.
Motion approved?
Hey, I should've bid two dollars.
Dollar and two cents.
And I want them all in one cent.
Resolution, uh, item thirteen, approving three-year professional service agreement between the City of Livingston and Paul Maurer Shows as a carnival and concessions provider for the city's Sweet Potato Festival.
Yes, Honorable Maryland Counsel, uh, this is a routine item. Um, as you know, we've, we've been working with Paul Maurer Shows since 2011. Uh, they've been doing a great job for us, really no material change. I know that, uh, legal counsel, um, might want to do some, some little word changes in there, but other than that, it's pretty straightforward and, um, and it's, it's, it's slated. We've been planning this, uh, for a while and unless you have any other questions, uh, this is good to go.
Okay, open to the public for any comments. No one coming forward. Back to council. Any comments, motions?
Just move to approve.
I have a first from Councilmember McCabe to approve, um, or adopt this resolution. And second from, uh, Vice Mayor Samra. Roll call, please.
Okay, roll call. Councilmember McCabe?
Aye.
Councilmember Aguilar?
Yes.
Councilmember Sekairos?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Samra?
Yes.
Mayor Soria?
Yes.
Motion approved?
Okay, item, um, fifteen, city council to approve the sale of surplus property.
Uh, we jump one, but we can go to that one.
Which one did I skip? Fourteen, all right.
Thirteen, fourteen.
Going back, resolution approving the two-year service agreement between the City of Livingston, uh, Ricky Ricardo Promotion as event planner to assist in planning the city's Sweet Potato Festival.
Yes, so this one is directly related to the previous item. Again, uh, we all know, uh, Mr. Ricardo, uh, from Ricky Ricardo Promotions. He assists us every year, uh, last few years, um, as it relates to the actual entertainment and he, he also does some other things for us that we very much appreciate. So, um, again, pretty self-explanatory. Uh, they, um, it, you know, our goal is to continue to make the Sweet Potato Festival, uh, you know, a, a prominent, eh, eh, venue for folks to come out and enjoy and have a good time. Um, he has access to a lot of talent, uh, he's local. He, as a matter of fact, um, has, uh, is looking at donating a thousand dollars and wants folks to pledge money towards, uh, making improvements to the, uh, the, the Max Foster Park. So we're gonna be taking him up on that. And, um, and it's, it's been great. Anything that you might wanna add, Jackie? Yeah, okay, so with that, uh, we would love to continue to work with him, and this is a two-year contract.
Okay, and open up to public. No one coming forward. Bring it back to council for any questions, comments, or motions.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, roll call. Councilmember McCabe?
Aye.
Councilmember Aguilar?
Yes.
Councilmember Sekairos?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Samra?
Yes.
Mayor Soria?
Yes.
Motion approved?
All right, now we are on fifteen, city council to authorize the sale of surplus property.
Okay, so getting rid of old stuff. Um, basically through the years, we've been updating office equipment, uh, everything, computers, chairs, tables. Um, basically need the council's approval to dispose of these items one way or another. Uh, the two, we have, there's two vehicles, one's a pickup or truck and the other is an old police car. Um, the high school would like to get that for their auto shop program to let the, uh, the students there practice their craft. Uh, the other items, we're looking at either for the computer parts, pretty much recycling or auctioning, um, or, you know, anything that's not of any value, we can just dispose of. So we're seeking, seeking council approval on that.
Okay, open to the public is, uh, the surplus the city has. And close it, bring it back to council for any comments, questions, or motions.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, what I'd like to do is also add something to it as far as the, uh, electronic equipment, that all data storage devices must be removed. This day and age is too dangerous to leave, let our servers go out with data on them. Not just wiped out, but physically removed from it. If they fall in someone's hand, they can't plug it in and then figure things out and then now they, most likely we're gonna be using the same configuration or passwords and I don't, I don't think we want them having access. So data storage device has gotta be removed. Uh, other than that, uh, I don't know if you guys wanna?
Make a motion to approve with the?
What was, uh, what was going to the high school?
The two vehicles.
Yeah, an old police car and a, uh, city truck.
To their mechanic shop?
Auto shop.
So I make a motion to approve with, uh, removing all the data storages and devices from the vehicles.
No, no, from the, uh, servers and equipment.
Second.
I have a first from Councilmember Sekairos approving, uh, with the added removing any data or storage or anything the city or police department may have, removing that from the service. Second from, uh, Councilmember McCabe, roll call.
Okay, roll call. Councilmember McCabe?
Sorry, aye.
Councilmember Aguilar?
Yes.
Councilmember Sekairos?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Samra?
Yes.
Mayor Soria?
Yes.
Motion approved, five zero.
Item sixteen, city council to provide staff direction as it relates to waiving fees for downtown farmer's market slash open market.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and council, this is a, a discussion and possible direction item for, for, from, from staff to council, so. for, for, from, from staff to council, so, uh, it's pretty much open in, in case you guys want to, uh, waive some of the fees. Uh, I know Councilmember, uh, Samra was talking about, uh, you know, attracting, just providing some incentives to attract other vendors to hopefully have more vendors out in the downtown market. So it's open for discussion.
What are the current fees now?
Uh, Jackie, if you can please share with council what our current fees are and, yeah, if you can come up to the mic.
So currently, our vendors can pay twenty dollars a week or they can pay sixty dollars a month, so that breaks it down a little, um, a little less. So, um, there is a budget that is in here and currently we have nineteen vendors. However, only seven of them are paying, the rest are nonprofits, agencies that are coming to set up. So, um, I can answer any questions or?
Mr. Mayor? Uh, first of all, I brought this item forward, I know we have a discussion. Jackie, do they also pay towards insurance or any, what, what is the total cost to a vendor?
It is whatever the fee is a week.
For profit, what is the total cost to put their booth up there?
Twenty dollars.
Includes the insurance?
And we pay the insurance.
Okay, uh, I still think, you know, to me is, we work hard in trying to attract, uh, groups to come in, you know? Uh, I don't think waiving twenty-dollar fees is really gonna break us. Yeah, I don't think, I don't know if, uh, I'm sure, uh, within our budget, uh, we can find that money somewhere, you know, I mean. But I, I, what I would like to do is try to bring them in to see if we can expand that and, you know, and encourage more people because if we have more regular booths, maybe more farmer produce would come, you know, so this idea, I was trying to get as many people as we can get, you know? And if we decide to go ahead, I would like to have it go effective immediately, starting, uh, Thursday.
You mean waiving all, all till, till October?
Yes.
Why don't we just do one month?
Well, that's not, I mean, I think if you...
It's like, I mean, if you give them for free, they might even show up either. So if they pay, then they might show up because now they have to recoup their costs. So it's...
I mean, who's gonna put in says, I wanna be there and not show up, you know, I mean? So I mean, yeah, I mean...
However you wanna see it or anybody else wants to see it, so...
I would just like to, I'm asking...
We just, we just fought the police for some eighty, for eighty-dollar fees and now you're giving some noise.
Well, maybe perhaps, because that's really a general fund fee.
Okay, so I mean...
So is the, so is the, uh...
Why don't we throw it out for a month and then see how that works out and bring it back?
I agree with that, I think it should be, uh, something to, you know, measure. Yeah, one or two months, I'm okay with.
We'll see how it goes and we'll bring it back in two months, that's fine.
Cause it's also setting a precedent, like we, with the fees this year. That's gonna be the expectation for future...
For next year and after that and the month after, so...
Okay, well, uh, let's try for two months and we'll, we'll bring it back before it expires to see if it's a success or not. So I don't know if you need a motion or just a, uh, direction?
And a question for the city manager or Jackie, is this fee codified anywhere as far as a resolution or anything? Or is this just something that the city is charging?
That's a very good point, very good question. Uh, I don't think that we ever codified this fee. I don't think we've ever brought, you know, and so we're gonna need to tidy this up and, uh, and bring it to council for, um, you know, for formal adoption as far as what we charge the vendors.
I do know that we're not overcharging, as you can see by the budget.
No, no, absolutely.
So we are...
But, but as you know, any fee, uh, any fee that we charge in, in the municipality, it has to come to council and formally approved through resolution or through ordinance. So, not, not a knock on you, uh, we just, uh, very good point, so we just need to, um, just like, uh, the police department did this evening, we'll bring that, we'll lump it in with other fees that maybe another department has.
So I, I do have a question, just, um, so we have a fee policy for the department and it has everything that we should include in the fee. So would that be as good, I mean, if those are the same items that have been passed to include in a fee versus just every time I have a new program? Cause you know, we have lots of classes and those kinds of things that we would have to come and ask for approval.
We could, we could definitely discuss that, uh, Jackie, the other fees, um, we could definitely discuss that tomorrow. Um, I think by now focusing on this fee, um, as far as the direction goes, I think that, that if council goes this way, the direction would be given to bring back the, the, kind of more of a program, um, where it's potentially two months of no charging and then goes back to a certain amount. And then we could, we could have something like a resolution establishing this program for this.
I'm, I'm open to council's session, but only thing I was, only item I was looking to is the street vendors, is the only thing I was looking at at this time.
And has anybody paid the whole month already, Jackie?
Well, we had people coming in ready to pay and we said...
Oh, okay.
So, we didn't wanna have to take their money and then give them their money back. And then that staff time and, you know, so...
So let's do two months and...
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion to...
Okay, I'll make that motion.
Free for two months and then bring it back.
Free for two months and then before the expiration, uh, we can get the results of if there's been improvement.
We could work on that program, bring back the program.
Have a second?
I second it.
Second from Councilmember Aguilar, roll call please.
Okay, roll call, Councilmember McCabe?
Aye.
Councilmember Aguilar?
Yes.
Councilmember Secairos?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Samra?
Yes.
Mayor Soria?
Yes.
Hey Jackie, do, do they, uh...
Uh, how do you advertise to try and get vendors? I, I know I get my fruit on Sundays at, Atwater Flea Market and there's probably at least...
Our market manager has been to all the different flea markets, a lot of people are, they have stuff going on.
On Tuesdays, yeah, or I mean Thursdays?
Might have to change the date.
Would changing the date maybe be better?
Well, we did this day because there are markets all over the place. And so if you put them all on the same day, then the people that could do turlak on Wednesday, I mean, every, every day's different.
Well, maybe they could reach out again this, this year, hit Atwater and Turlak and, uh, Merced?
Well, I have to say that I took the turlak and I went past the Thursday night market there.
They have it Saturday too across the street where you...
No, I meant hitting the flea markets to get fruit, uh, you know, uh...
It's not, because of the fruit and vegetables and going through the department of that, the system of setting at the market is not the same as going to give the flea market vendors. And they actually have to go out and see where it's from.
Yeah. Yeah, that's, that's why our market is, is actually separated. So we have a designated area for the, uh, certified farmer's market and then the other area is, has to be separate.
Just my experience with running a flea market in order for you guys to try and... Can you, can you come up to the mic? Thank you. We need your name and address, please.
Uh, Diego Castillo, eleven five four nine Livingston Crest Road, Livingston. In my experience, my feedback from running a, a flea market is, in order for you guys to attract vendors, there has to be a, a medium between having the right amount of foot traffic and vendors. If you guys don't have the foot traffic, it's gonna be hard to attract vendors. And going on what she's saying, as far as being, um, uh, like a certified mark, certified, certified, uh, farmer's market, it's a lot tougher to get vendors because there's a lot more to the approval processes as a vendor. Whereas a traditional market, they just show up, pay your fee and you're gone. You got, it, it's, it's something you guys have to set up a plan and it's gonna take a little time to get going. And it's a good, to set up maybe free for, like you're saying, maybe, we, we, when we did it, we did it for ninety days. Uh, we, and then we tried to bring it back for a longer period of time. And if you don't charge anything, people don't show up because there's no value. So it does make sense to at some point charge, but it, it does help you to not charge at the beginning because it gets you some traction going. But you also gotta figure out a way to try to get foot traffic. So you gotta figure a, a marketing plan to get the vendors in, but you also wanna get customers because if you have no customers, then the vendors won't come back, so...
That's true. Thank you, Jackie.
The next, uh, item on the agenda is eighteen, uh, council selection of LAVCO. I'm always going forward. And let them raise your fees. Item seventeen, discussion in making Livingston High School part of the Livingston High School District open for discussion.
Yeah, a lot of constituents have come and spoken to me after different events that have occurred at the high school and they're so fond of our Livingston Unified School District and the success of our middle school that they've asked about whether or not we could start the steps to, to make the, the high school part of our local Livingston Unified. Similar to what Delhi did and Delhi has local control of their own school, they like the idea of Livingston having local control of our school, meaning our high school. Um, all, all I was hoping for with the discussion is that we can provide staff direction to, to, to research it to an extent, to figure out what the process would be and to advise us if there's anything that can be done, um, to allow the voters to be the ones who make that determination.
Mr. Mayor, may I? First of all, uh, Mr. McCabe, I agree with you. I have not been very happy with the way the high school is right now. You can't talk to folks over there, you mean, they're all in Atwater and they, they see Livingston as whatever. Step, really a stepchild. Now, uh, I agree with you and I think if we could, we should move forward. But it was my understanding, and please correct me if I'm wrong, and I think we should do something, okay? First of all, I'm not saying that, but the city doesn't run the schools. We would have to work with the school district, they would have to put this out and says, I believe that, they would have to do this, I don't know, we can, we definitely need to research it.
Yeah, a- and that's why I'm requesting staff to research it and that's all I'm requesting at this time. My, my, some different jurisdictions, the cities are allowed to put items on the ballot. So we may be able to, but we'd have to have staff actually find out if we can or not.
And in that case, I am a hundred percent in, in, hey, do you know what? Let's see what we can do.
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to make Livingston High School a school I wanna send my son to. Cool.
Yeah, I mean, I... Jose's putting his phone down, I think he's sure now that he's gonna have some work to do. But, you know, perhaps we can work in conjunction with the Livingston School District. Cause we're gonna need, and in, at the end of the day, they're the ones that are gonna have to adopt it. To, we're not, we as a council can't run the schools, they, they would have to run the schools.
Yeah, but if they tell us no, there's, there's, there's five guys right here who can get signatures really quick.
Yes, and I, and I, if we were to move forward, I'll be the first one to start knocking on doors to get those signatures. But also, while we're working to add to what you're talking about, research, is to drug staff or have staff contact, uh, the staff at the school district and to say, hey, how do we, we're looking at this, do you have any interest in it? If they're not interested, then we're not gonna be able to do it. But if they are, then they need to coordinate and says, what can we do to make this happen?
And also ask them why they didn't offer me a ticket to this year's graduation.
The high school or the...
The high school, yeah.
Oh, I don't know, they didn't offer me one either, so it doesn't...
I know, turkeys, I can't go, I have two nieces, we have big families. After doors open?
Tickets are for, for family to get in and then the doors open and anyone after that can get in.
I'm a local dignitary, come on now.
So, um, so just for the, for council information, I did reach out to, um, to Superintendent Samora and told him that this item was on the agenda and, and, and he was welcome to be here, of course, and any representative in case they wanted to share any thoughts. And I know that, uh, Councilmember McCabe and, and, uh, Councilmember Secairos has actually brought out this issue with him, uh, a few times, not sure how many times, but, so at least they're aware of.
All right. And Mayor, if directed, obviously, that seems like that's, that's the direction of the council. We're happy to look at the legal process and provide, uh, provide the city council with, uh, just the, the summary of what the legal process is.
Okay.
If we could check with the Delhi, I see how they did it.
Council selection of LAVCO Eastside Representative, agenda item number eighteen.
I think you've been, yeah.
Just so you know, I have only missed one meeting, that was in the very beginning, when I didn't get a chance to get my employer to give me the time off. And it was too late because I had something scheduled, but I, ever since, I have not missed it. And we do have a good chance of being the vice chair this time because I chaired it last time, so I think we can really, really, with your hard work at the NCAG level and mine over there, I think we can really make some good decisions here.
I think you've been doing a good job and attending regularly, so I would like to nominate you to continue with that position.
Have a first from Councilmember Aguilar and second from McCabe nominating Vice Mayor Samra as the LAVCO Eastside Representative, roll call please.
Roll call, Councilmember McCabe?
Aye.
Councilmember Aguilar?
Yes.
Councilmember Secairos?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Samra?
Think about it, please.
Yes.
Yes.
Mayor Soria, that was a yes, motion approved, five zero.
And that looks like our concludes our council for June fifth. Thank you for those listening and those in attendance. Have a good evening, go home, love your family, and have a safe night.